Hi, good afternoon, everyone. It is September 24th, 2021. The time is 3:05. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Santa Monica Planning Commission. So let's start with roll call.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landrus?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
Commissioner Reese?
Present.
Chair pastor.
Present. Okay, so let's move on to the planning director's report, if we have one.
Good afternoon. Nothing really to report since Monday. I'll just take the opportunity to thank the commission for what is your second meeting this week, and also thank staff for all the work and being here. This is what would typically be a Friday off for staff, and even though this group is not used to being off on their Fridays off, they're here and really very much appreciated. So I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you, David. I would also like to echo my appreciation for staff's, for staff being here today, for working so hard this week and all the time, but especially as we have been trying to get through all of these housing element items. So I'd also like to note for the record that Commissioner Fonda Bernardi has joined us. Hello, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi. Commissioner Landrus?
Yes, brief. I'd like to say this now because I think by the time the meeting's over, we're all going to be, we'll all want to run away. And I'm sure that, Alisa, that you join me in this as having the last year and a half having been quite a lot of work for our community, for the planning, for the planning department as we come to the end or the beginning of the end of the housing element process. And just having had the privilege of co-shepherding this in the first half, want to express my thanks to everyone who's been involved so far, the staff, members of the public, members of the public, and experts who participated in the technical working groups, members of boards and commissions who participated in giving feedback on the drafts and helping shape the document. It's been quite a journey to get here. It's going to go to council, and I'm sure there'll be other opportunities for people to acknowledge all the hard work that's been done. But David and Jing and Rachel and Heidi and all the teams that have been involved in putting together and leading this effort across multiple divisions of what is now the Community Development Department, as well as input from the housing, the housing team, I just think deserve our thanks before we get into the final wrangling over this. So just wanted to offer that at the outset.
Thank you, Commissioner Landrus. Are there any other planning commissioner announcements? Going once, going twice? Okay, I'm going to read the public comment procedures. So please note that this afternoon's procedures for public comment, we are accepting oral public comment by phone through the pre-registration system noted on the agenda. Registration for oral comment closed at probably 1:00 today, not 3:30. If you are a member of the public who register for public comment, please check your email for call-in instructions. Instructions were emailed to you at the start of the meeting. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the commission. Comments received after noon today will be considered part of the record of the proceeding, but will not be posted online with the planning commission's agenda, might not be reviewed by the planning commission, and will not be read aloud during public comments during this meeting today. Please note that the moderator function in blue jeans is... Anything that's written in the chat will not be forwarded to the commissioners, so please note it is only for technical help. Melissa, what was the cutoff for public comment, for oral comment registration today?
1:00 PM today. It's always two hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. So I'm glad I got that right. Okay, so we're going to move to number six and 6A, which is our public hearing, which is the recommendation to the city council on adoption of Santa Monica's six-cycle housing element and certification of the final environmental impact report for the six-cycle housing element. So before we start, I want to, I want to say a few things. I would like to keep our comments as concise and focused as possible tonight. I think it's really, really important that we stay on track, that we don't interrupt each other, and that we don't repeat ourselves as to discussions that we had either on Monday night or discussions that we have previously had on issues. Monday was a long meeting, and we got a lot done, but I think it was probably a little bit unruly for staff in terms of really understanding everything that we did, and I want to make sure that we are as clear as possible. To the extent possible, Jing and Rachel and others on staff, when we are talking about a particular program, if you could please bring that up on the screen, I think that would really help everyone understand exactly where we're at and what we're talking about. And to the extent it is possible, if you guys could kind of in real time draft amendments, if it is reasonable, I think that would also be helpful, so we can all really see what we're voting on. I, again, let's try not to interrupt each other. I will interrupt people if they're interrupting each other, or if they're going on, they are repeating something that we've already talked about. I think we should try to keep this meeting nice as I go, as I go on and on here. And so before we start, I've been thinking about the most efficient way to get through all of the programs and the appendices. And so what I would like to suggest is that commissioners, with what we do around, and commissioners basically tell me which programs they have comments on or which appendices, and that I'm going to write all of those down and consolidate them, and then we're going to only address those programs or appendices because we went through all of the programs last time. So if you're able to do that, that would be super helpful. I had asked staff to send out an email. I don't know that that happened, so I apologize for that. But perhaps we can start with Commissioner Landrus, because I believe he has organized his comments in such a fashion. And again, I'm just looking for the number of the program or the appendancy and nothing
I understand. So what I'm seeing from the presentation, before we hear the presentation, is that some of what, some of what I had communicated, maybe, maybe already have been dealt with, but I will, okay, so...
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Landrus. Yes, that's correct. Let's hear the presentation first.
I think it would be better if we heard the presentation first. Could I also, wait, could we hear the public immediately following the presentation so that if we want to pick up things that they say, we can put it into the list? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, thank you, everyone and staff. Let's hear the presentation.
Yeah, good afternoon, commissioners. We're super pleased to be here for this final planning commission hearing on the housing element. It's been almost a year to the day when we started this process with the launch of a website and an insane schedule, a lot of hopes and dreams, and it's been an incredible, incredible amount of work by this commission and this amazing housing element team of Ross and Carrie and Steve and Rachel that have just truly pulled off a little bit of a minor miracle in getting us to this point. So with that, we are going to jump into the presentation, and Ross is going to put it on the screen. Great. So go ahead to the next slide, Ross. So the presentation today, as you all mentioned, is actually online for anyone in the public who would like to follow along. What we intend to do is to basically reflect back to the commission, the direction that you provided to us on September 20th, to make sure that we accurately captured what your intent was, so you see precise red lines in the addenda. So we're going to give you an overview of that, and also the staff response where necessary to each one. And then I'm going to turn it over to Ross and Rachel to go through the technical changes and appendices ENF in response to some of the public correspondence received, and then further guidance received from HCD about clarifications to technical changes to make, and then we'll wrap up with an overview of the final EIR, and ultimately seek to have the commission recommend to the council the adoption of the housing element and also on the final EIR. Next slide. So we'll start with the addenda. So the first change is discussion that you had about SB9 and the 25% demolition limitation for building a duplex. So you can see there the proposed language for program 4E, and staff agrees that that will be added. The second change is to facilitate and streamline the approval of housing projects on school sites, as contemplated in state legislation that was recently passed, and you can see the wording there. You will note in here that you see the purple line. That is because that is a language that we wrote between Monday and today reflecting the commission's direction. What you see in green is actually requests for changes that Commissioner Landrus had sent earlier today, so we have integrated that in there, you know, since it was some helpful changes in there. So you'll see that throughout the presentation. We did want to note with respect to this policy that school districts can vote to exempt themselves from local law, but the school district is interested, you know, in prior discussions with them, that they are interested in developing housing for their workforce. And so this is the policy that has been proposed. Next slide. Next slide is about program 1A, projects requesting a minor modification, a sole entitled to streamlining, and produce a number of modifications on the menu. So you can see the changes there in purple clarify that it's code-compliant projects or those that are granted a minor modification. And then the timing of this, the commission suggested it change from August, coming back to December 31st, 2021. We would note that maybe to start with timing, December 31st, 2021, due to just the time available, there's noticing requirements and sort of necessary procedure to bring forward code amendments, you know, in terms of getting something adopted through the council by the end of the year is really not possible. So staff, we propose a time from March 31st, 2022, as something perhaps more reasonable, you know, where we can actually accomplish the outreach that the commission has requested and all of the procedural and noticing timelines that are necessary. And also with respect to whether projects with needing minor modifications are covered under the HAA, you know, the city's position is that those that seek deviations don't meet those objective standards, and they're not covered in the HA. However, you know, I think staff is comfortable with projects that aren't, that have the amount of modification, just still be eligible for the buyright process. And we would note that in those situations, the city is prohibited from denying or reducing density. Next slide. Program 1B, that's to change the timeframe to September 30th, 2022. This program was about the design review, streamlining, so we were okay with that change. Program 1C is to allow flexibility in housing on surface lots in all residential districts. So you can see there in the purple, the change where we deleted the part about are associated with existing commercial use, and that the city will also adopt standards that incentivize housing production on surface parking lots associated with residential use. So we wanted to make sure that there was a distinction, so it's not just added on to that prior sentence, it's a new provision. Next slide. Program 1F is the sort of like upzoning program, and that is, the changes here were to add an asterisk to the bottom of the table, so you can see there the language that the commission had asked to be added to that table, and then adding a last sentence to consider opportunities for rezoning as necessary to facilitate housing goals and preservation, and then add to the end also a program 1F. So that is more in response to some public correspondence about particular, specific standards that, you know, have maybe been a concern. So here is, no, this is an including but not limited to, you know, so this is just an example. It doesn't mean those are the only standards that we're going to look at. We believe that, you know, that broad term of development, impact fees and design standards, you know, kind of covers, that's what we meant, kind of covered all these things, you know, like daylight plane, and then the maximum ground floor height, ground for residential use. There are obviously a myriad of other things in there, but we don't have to list every single standard, you know, for that, for that program for implementation. Next slide, 1G. There was a accidental deletion of the ADU accelerator from the title, so that's been restored. 1I, pretty simple change there in terms of adding environmentally sustainable, so that was fine. In 1J, here again, very similar to 1F, that asterisk note, and then also added in UNIX requirements was what the commission requested, revising the definition of a housing project in the DCP to be consistent with the Housing Accountability Act, and also opportunities for rezoning or the creation of new districts. So that was again similar to what was in 1F. And then also here, similar language to 1F in terms of adding that to the last paragraph. Next slide, Ross. And, you know, so here we were, staff is okay with the references to the HPP affordability requirements, and, you know, I guess we would note that the FARs are, I think, as we discussed at Monday's meeting, they are based on council direction of 15% affordability. It kind of all works together, you know, in terms of the FARs that have been proposed. And going on to the next slide, in 2C, the request of the commission here was to remove percentages and distribution requirements.
I'm sorry, Jing, can you go back to the previous slide? Did you cover all of the other points?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
The last three, yeah. Could you, could you talk about those? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so I think this was more in response to the commission's general discussion about the kind of adjusting up and down or distributing housing in different parts of the city. One thing we did want to note of that is if housing is going to be permitted in zones where housing has not occurred previously, basically, you know, what that means is if you do allow housing in a zone, you know, we have to make sure that standards in that zone make housing feasible to be produced, so we can't set FARs that are not feasible for a housing project. And, you know, the way, unfortunately, the way that works is that, you know, some of these areas are high-cost, high-opportunity areas, and if the land cost is high, you know, the FARs are necessarily high as well, you know, to sort of make up the project cost necessary to make that project feasible. I think one of the things that we want to have considered, and, you know, certainly this is more for implementation later, is that there may be fair housing implications resulting from continuing to discourage and housing in some areas and incentivizing it or continuing to incentivize it in others. So that's something that we would need to be aware of if that is a direction that the city would want to go. So, you know, that's just generally in that concept, and I think we would note that on the direction to change the definition of housing project, the council actually directed that or adopted that definition last year in August. You know, so for that reason, you know, staff's not recommending that change because that was pretty recent in terms of that definition. And they, council did specifically discuss, you know, whether to adopt the HAA definition or something, you know, more unique for downtown, and that's where they landed with that definition. Next slide. With program 2C, this is the HPP, so this was removing the distribution requirements and the overall percentages. So you can see those have been stricken in the purple line, and then there was a minor change in green with respect to the increasing the threshold to at least six units at which projects are required to provide onsite or offsite affordable units. And next slide. Here, it's more of a general change to requiring affordable units to be higher than the onsite option, instead of, again, the specific breakdown of, of the unit distribution. And staff was in agreement with those changes. Program 2D, the income distribution for the affordability requirements was directed to be removed, then the, you know, there should be a way for developers to get more than one concession. So you can see added on to that program, we think that this is what the commission in the purple line, what you meant in that, so that's probably something to confirm. Staff does not recommend this change as it conflicts with prior council direction with regard to how state density bonus law and the HPP interplay. So I will say that the city is currently implementing the provisions of state density bonus law and will continue to do so, and applicants, you know, who comply with the city's HPP are eligible for density bonuses in accordance with the tables in state density bonus law. I think we would also note that, you know, there are other options available in state density bonus law other than concessions and incentives as well, such as waivers. So there are other avenues potentially for applicants to pursue in terms of project feasibility. Next slide, program 2E. This is regarding city-owned sites, and the purple line there is, I think we took that verbatim from the direction in terms of ensuring their revenue-generating uses that are in synergy with fair and economically diverse housing, putting up to 200% AMID restricted units. Staff does not recommend this change as council had fairly extensive discussions about the program language for city-owned sites, and for that reason, you know, we don't recommend the change at this time. Next slide. There'll be a new policy added, 1.10. This was with regard to city-owned sites and pursuing grant funding. I think that's pretty straightforward there, so that policy 1.10 will be added. Program 2F is with respect to kind of expanding housing trust fund use for acquisition rehab of units for deed-restricted multi-unit developments in areas of affluence. And staff's response here is we don't recommend this change because the city council is the one that sets policy on use of housing trust funds. There actually is a housing trust fund plan already in place. We provided the link in the addenda, actually, and it establishes priority goals and funding allocations. Currently, the plan sets forth, HTF funds are used for the creation of permanent supportive housing and for populations. That is the current council adopted plan, and those are based on recommendations from the housing commission. So we did have a chance to talk briefly with housing staff about it, you know, and I think this was what we put in terms of the response to the addenda is, you know, reflective of some of that concern. Next slide. Program 3A, I think here was a little bit of language confusion, the distinction between the replacement requirements in SB 330 is revised now by SB 8, and then the housing replacement requirements and housing element law. So you can see by just kind of renumbering the one and the two, the or, so that part, I think there was concern that it applied to all residential uses, and that's not the case. We looked again at the statute, and it's meant to be read together, so it's really for units that were occupied by low or very low-income households, which was, I think, our understanding of it, so that has been confirmed. Program 4B, this is an amendment to that program to allow basically community assembly uses on or or above the ground floor, again, providing that flexibility for those kinds of uses to not just be restricted only to the ground floor. And staff is supportive of this change. We just noted that, you know, with respect to this program, there was discussion around specific applicability maybe to youth-serving nonprofit uses. But community assembly uses are a used classification in the zoning ordinance. There's not really a need to, you know, there, there's not a need to distinguish between different types of community assembly uses if that would be covered under this program regardless. Next slide, Program 4D. This is the right-to-return pilot program. And this is actually, you can see the, the purple and the green was the suggestion or the direction from the planning commission with respect to the objective for this program. And I think staff doesn't recommend this change because council actually approved this pilot program on July 20th, July 23, 2021, meeting with specific program objectives. So we wouldn't recommend this change without council direction at this time. Next slide. Program 6A is, or I, I think the intent was to amend Program 6A, but staff actually ended up writing this up as a policy instead. Given that, you know, there's kind of a lot of unknowns with respect to it. You know, it's a, it's something that definitely needs more consultation with Housing and Human Services Division staff about whether this is an appropriate policy to include. So there in the purple and the green line is what we thought we heard with respect to the commission's direction. Program 6C is the POD program and the discussion here on expanding the applicability or the eligibility for the POD program. And what was added here was end persons with disabilities. Staff doesn't recommend adding in this language. Since this is an, an existing council adopted program, any changes would require council approval. So the, there, there's already kind of discussion within Policy 6.4 about the potential expansion to other rent burdened households, including persons with disability. So it doesn't seem like it's necessary to add this in here. It's already in a policy. And the program expansion will be evaluated based on Housing Commission and Housing and Human Services Division input and obviously available program funding. And then finally, just wrapping up the addenda with a couple of additional staff changes. These were made in response as we continue to just get guidance from HCD on technical changes to the housing element. There's a new Program 1K that was added. We, we were just getting clarification from HCD on the shortfall of sites available to accommodate the city's lower income arena. This is required by housing element law. So we actually added that analysis to Appendix F with, which Rachel will review later. And essentially what it requires is because we have a shortfall of sites to accommodate that lower income arena with existing standards, it requires the city to identify, you know, other sites that, that can do that. So that's the, the gist of this program. And the language here is actually pulled straight from the statute. And I think hearing some of the discussion around, you know, the effects of kind of wholesale change on Main Street on Montana. It does specifically exclude Main Street and Montana from the requirements in state law that, you know, that the city allow 100% residential use. So it does retain the ability for those two streets to retain the ground floor active use. So that, so that is the effect of this program is that it would remove that active use requirement essentially in every other zone except for NC Maine and NC Montana. And it would also require residential use to occupy at least 50% of the floor in mixed-use housing projects. We're aware that we received some correspondence of confusion as to what mixed use means. And it's about housing projects, not just mixed-use commercial or non-residential projects. And then Program 1A, again, this is a clarification that we added to ensure that it demonstrates commitment that the city will, will develop written procedures to implement the streamlined review process for projects that are eligible for SB 35. And you can also see in Program 1A, we just added a specific government code section reference just to help make it clear where that language comes from. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ross just to review the Appendix E technical changes.
Thanks, Jing. So as Jing said, I'm going to just summarize some of the revisions or further revisions we made to Appendix E. These were sometimes in response to HCD's letter, so they were in the way staff initiated. And also in response to comment letters we have received. Just so to start out with development standard constraints, we had added additional acknowledgement of other possible constraints to development standards such as daylight plain or active commercial ground floor requirements. This also included discussion regarding fees and processes. Ultimately, like Jing had mentioned, you know, we added additional clarification to Programs 1F and 1J that we will be reviewing all standards and regulations and fees. Because essentially everything has the chance to be a potential constraint on housing projects. But we will also be providing feasible FARs, building heights that will correspond to these fees and processes and various development standards. We received a comment regarding activity centers and the possible reinstation of them. We provided additional details regarding what the process was, what, what, what the activity central centered process required and why it was replaced with the community benefit system. Essentially, it always required either, you know, consolidation of lots, multiple owners, DAs. So that was why it was moved to the community benefit system. The next was residential zone density limits. This is the density caps in the R2, 3, and 4 zones, for example. We recognize that these are constraint. However, we provided reasoning of their purpose, which is really to deter displacement of rent-controlled units and affordable housing stock. However, this kind of leads into the surface parking lot redevelopment limitations. These density caps essentially reside over these lots as well. So we, we referenced the intent of Program 1C to remove these barriers on these specific lots to encourage the redevelopment of surface parking lots. The next is the Affordable Housing Production Program. We added additional details that summarized Programs 2C's revisions to the HPP. Also in regards to community benefits, we provided additional details and referenced Programs 1J establishing that the feasible FARs and building heights that will be part of that program have accounted for community benefit fees and other requirements. And really the programs intend to review all of these standards, regulations, and fees. That would include the review of community benefits. Additional language was also similarly added for the DCP since they have a slightly their own version of the community benefits program, but essentially the same reference to that specific Program 1F that will be establishing feasible FARs and building heights that really have already accounted for these community benefits. Last on this slide is the implementation of state density bonus. We acknowledge the city's past practices on implementation, but provided additional information regarding current compliance that was provided by city council. This slide covers the local coastal plan. So we did summarize the California Coastal Commission's process and also the city's progress of adopting its own LCP. Though we did acknowledge the current constraint and also referenced how we were moving, we have been in the process of moving towards removing some of that process. But unfortunately, until the LCP has been adopted, the constraint of the coastal commission's process and timelines are, you know, largely out of our hands at the moment, at least. The next is the location limitations on housing. So really this is, we were referencing Programs 1F and 1J. As Jing had mentioned, that would be including looking at location limitations on housing, such as the ground, such as locating it on the ground floor. Staff also included a summary of the various building code amendments that are local to Santa Monica that provide a higher order of seismic, structural, fire, occupancy, safety, as well as environmental conservation. These constraints were recognized, but they were largely weighed against the city's local, local climate, geological, topographical, and environmental conditions. And, and ultimately the city's goals, which are important that we want to keep intact. Additional information also was regarding the city's high-rise definition, kind of how it came to be after the 1994 Northridge earthquake and its necessity to ensure the protection for human life. The last slide of mine, we, we also provided additional summary on on- and off-site improvements and recognized any constraints where they might be. We also referenced for entitlement processing that Program 1A will now be allowing minor modifications still be processed ministerially. In regards to SB 35, Program 1A will also be establishing written procedures to implement a streamlined review process. And Program 1B will be creating objective design standards. And lastly, for the accountable Housing Accountability Act, as Jing mentioned, although with a minor modification, they wouldn't, projects wouldn't fall under the protection of the HAA. However, we would still be processing ministerially. So that kind of gave like a very brief summary of the constraints on housing. The comments we also received, you know, requested us to review future potential red lines and future proposed programs. But HCD only really requires this appendix on constraints to be a snapshot of the current constraints on housing. And a lot of the language we added throughout the entire appendix was really trying to acknowledge, yes, there might be more constraints, but really highlighting the various programs that we have been implementing to, you know, really take a hard look and review at what constraints might be able to be adjusted or potentially removed, but also weighing them against, you know, most of these development standards and processes have been curated over time through a public process. And it needs, they all need to be weighed against the public good. But I think the programs we highlighted really show an attempt to remove as many constraints as possible. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Rachel to discuss Appendix F.
Thank you, Ross. So Appendix F was recently revised to include a new table. And this is following guidance from HCD. They wanted a table showing the shortfall of units under current development standards. So that table has been added. I think that this has been shown before previously in a presentation back earlier, I believe in, in March or June. So this table has been added and it shows that we have a current shortfall of approximately 3,000 units roughly, based on the current development standards. Next slide. And so Government Code Section 65583.2 states that if we have a shortfall in sites, we have to rezone. And with those rezoning, if there are mixed-use sites that are designated as mixed-use, we would have to allow for 100% residential use and require that 50, that if there is a mixed-use project, that we require at least 50% of that floor area in the mixed-use project to be residential. In addition, Appendix F was modified to reflect removal of a couple sites that have reset or new pending applications as well as a few table errors. Next slide. So I'm also going to move forward to the housing element final EIR, which is required as part of the California Environmental Quality Act. As we have discussed before, because the city's new arena exceeds Duluth, we had to do a new final EIR for it. And so the final EIR analyzed the potential development impacts of up to 11,000 units, which is the arena plus the 24% buffer that we have seen before. So the public review process for the EIR consisted of the notice of preparation, which was released on October 30th. And shortly thereafter, and I say shortly because pretty fast for EIR, but we released the EIR, the draft EIR on July 1st and circulated for 45 days. Within the 45-day public review period, we have four comment letters received as well as a PC comments that were provided on August 4th. All of those comments have been responded to in the final EIR, which was published on September 14th. Next slide. And just to recap, the final EIR found that there were significant unvotable environmental impacts associated with air quality, noise and vibration, cultural resources, public services, transportation, and utilities. In addition, mitigation measures were identified for air quality, tribal resources, public services, transportation, as well as utilities. Next slide. And as required by CEQA, we analyzed alternatives to the project, which included the no project, no build, which is required under CEQA guidelines. We also analyzed the transit-oriented housing development, which put all of the arena sites on, sorry, put all of the arena on fewer sites right next to transit stations. And then we also analyzed Alternative 3, which was a quantified objective alternative, which analyzed a lower number of sites. And CEQA requires us to designate an environmentally superior alternative, which was determined to be Alternative 3, the quantified objective. However, please note that this alternative does not achieve the goals of the housing element, nor would it achieve arena. So therefore, would not be compliant with state housing element law. Next slide. Just a few things to note that since we've published the final EIR, we will need to do an errata to modify Table 2.4 or 2-4 in the project description to account for the revised FARs as well as to remove the references to stories and correct it for height. We've also added in this footnote per discussion last, in the last hearing on Monday about the reserving the right to adjust the heights in FARs up or down. Next slide. In addition, the SSI table has been revised. And so accordingly, we need to revise it in the final EIR as well. Next slide. And so with that, I'm going to conclude and leave you with our recommendation that we adopt Resolution 21011 to recommend to the city council that we adopt the 2021 to 2029 housing element and consider and make a recommendation to the city council on the final EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask one clarifying question to staff and then let's move on to public comment? In your presentation, you noted those things that are recommendations from the planning commission that you don't agree with. Are you going to be? Is the housing element that goes to the city council still going to contain all of our recommendations regardless of whether or not staff agrees?
So we are going to, as we do, like, provide the planning commission's recommendation, but the final public hearing draft will, will, will represent staff's recommendation. If that makes sense. So we will provide-
No, it doesn't make sense. No. Why? So if we're going to be voting to recommend a housing element that is what this commission recommends, can you explain to me why then something else will be transmitted?
So, no, it, it's not that it wouldn't be transmitted. There, there would be the clear planning commission recommendation of, of what it is to the housing, to, to the city council, but staff would provide the, the response of like, here's what, you know, we would suggest instead. I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm not stating that correctly. But that's for, for the final public hearing draft for, for council, there'll be a clean version that reflects the planning commission's recommendation, but there'll be, you know, changes as recommended by staff. If it, if, if it's, for example, you know, because as we noted here, there may be things in there that are completely counter to council's prior direction. And it would not, you know, be appropriate to bring something forward, that staff's recommendation, you know, that is counter to council's prior direction. Commissioner Landrus?
So, I'm, I'm, I, I thank you, Chair, for asking that question because it's a concern. You know, the truth is, this housing element requires the council to change some of its standing policy direction. I think part of the controversy over housing element law is that whether you're, you know, no, no matter how you feel, is that it is putting city councils and county governments into the position of having to change their policies that have sat around for a long time. So I think another way of asking the question is, if a council member were to move the planning, the, the housing element unamended, okay, would they be moving our version of it or would they be moving your version of it? That's the key issue. In other words, if we make a recommendation on something, I think it would be appropriate for that to be the, as it were, motion to council. And then if, you know, if a majority of the council wants to remove something from it, then they should vote affirmatively to take something out. But essentially, if we're putting our names behind this document as a recommendation, then that is what they should be presented with to move. And if they want it, they will amend it. We expect them to amend it because they will bring their expertise to it. But they should not have to- But they should not have to take special action to incorporate, to follow our advice. That should be easy for them.
So I think that just thinking about all of the strategic plans we've done, I think it's always been the case where an addenda is carried forward, and I think we're trying to think about it in a way that's not confusing because I'm aware when the draft was brought forward to council, there was some difficulty with reconciling the draft plus an addenda. So in terms of preparing like what I'll call a clean final public hearing draft, you know, it will, it will, it will reflect, I think, what staff is recommending the council, you know, adopt, but there will be a clear, you know, like an addenda of like, here's the Planning Commission's recommendation. And there may be like alignment on things and some not, but I, otherwise, you're going to have two different versions of the housing element.
And our recommendation is meaningless. For example, I want to take something small because I don't want to, I don't want to, you know-
Well, I'm not sure that it is. Like, I'm not sure that, because it's not that your recommendation is not being represented or not being brought forward. It is.
Right, but it means that if our, no, it means that in order for our disagreements with staff to be incorporated into what the council does, that the, that somebody's got to pick it up and say, I want, I move that this Planning Commission recommendation, over staff's objection, be added back into the document. And that doesn't strike me as appropriate. I think it is appropriate for somebody to say, hey, staff's flagged this, I move to remove it until we can have a proper discussion about what our direction should be. But I think that, I think the affirmative action required of a council member should be to affirmatively remove something, not to affirmatively add it. Otherwise, our recommendation is not really a recommendation because they won't see our recommendation.
No, I don't think that's the case at all. No, I don't agree. I think they are absolutely seeing your recommendation. Again, the areas where staff is not recommending is because there has been very, very clear council direction on things that are, you know, and it's hard for us to say that that would be, that council will do something completely opposite that they directed three months ago.
That's not true. That's just-
Commissioner Fresco? Let's, let Commissioner Fresco-
We have had this exact conversation as a commission with staff with everything we've ever recommended to council. And we've seen many, many times that in the heat of the moment, the public brings up one particular issue which dominates the discussion, and our recommendations, when it's our job to recommend to council, that's why we're here, that's why we spend all this time doing this, often does, in practice, fall by the wayside. Unless one of us starts calling council members actively and reminding them, okay, remember, we put these things in there, don't forget to look at them, and still sometimes they get forgotten. So maybe this time, we could try as an experiment to do it the other way around, where the addendum that council has to take those extra steps to look at is the staff recommendation, and it's in the staff report, which is where the staff recommendation typically belongs in every other situation. And let's just see how it goes. Let's try it differently. That's my recommendation.
I agree. And, and so there is no question, I'm going to bring a motion later for that to happen. I mean, I, I have to say, in no other city I have ever worked in, can I think of, that staff changes the recommendation of a Planning Commission to go to council. It's just not appropriate. I mean, I'm going to be way more blunt than everyone else is being, right? Like, we work really, as Nina said, we work really hard on this, and we are asking council, right, we disagree with some of council's directions, and that's okay. And they're welcome to say, thank you, Planning Commission, for your recommendations, we disagree. But it is our purview and our charge to independently analyze things, and they can disagree, it's fine. And your staff report can say that, and that's great.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there, if there's nothing else in that, let's move to public comment, please. You've got two, two speakers, I believe.
That is correct. And our first caller is Paula Larmour. Hello, Paula, you are now off mute, and you have three minutes for your comments.
Good evening, or good afternoon, Commissioner Paul Larmour, Harding Larmour, Kucha and Cozel. First, I want to thank city staff and this commission for the tremendous amount of work that has occurred since receiving HCD's comment letter earlier in the month. I transmitted two attachments with 15 suggestive changes to the draft Housing Element that's before you. I just wanted to highlight two of them. First is a new Program 1K, which requires that for mixed-use housing projects, thanks for the clarification from staff, at least 50% of the floor area is residential. Because this is a general plan element, it is critical that the commission recommend adding clear language that pending and approved but not yet built projects are exempt. For at least some of these projects, where the city has specifically authorized them to proceed with the current use mix, EIRs have been prepared, and there are unique situations, including historic preservation and healthcare, with some of these projects. The SSI accurately only counts the proposed number of housing units in these projects. So my understanding is these are not relied upon as 50% residential for the SSI purposes, and there's no compelling need to have these sites covered by this new program language. Going forward, I think the city needs to consider how they can allow some flexibility with this program, given that we've now allowed residential in all zones, which is wonderful, but we need to build in some flexibility. So this requirement doesn't discourage adding housing. For example, there are historic preservation projects where you might not be able to come out with a 50% residential floor area, but they could add 25% or 30% residential. We wouldn't want to prohibit them from adding residential and missing out on the housing altogether. Second, with respect to state density bonus law implementation, please add language committing to the AHPP not blocking full use of the state density bonus law with respect to both density bonus and the number of incentive concessions for such projects. Two ways that you can address this that achieve the same result. One would be to allow applicants to provide any mod or low-income units as very low, as previously discussed. And a second alternative way to achieve the same result would be to provide in our local ordinance that both the density bonus and the incentive concessions be based on the total number of affordable units, including mod units. So a project that provides a 15% affordable unit would receive the full density bonus and the three incentive concessions, even though, under the 555, 10% of those units would be mod or low. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm available for any questions.
Paula, hold on a second. Commissioner Landris?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Larmour. And I want to follow up on the last thing you just said, because I want to make sure I understand it. Are you suggesting that the 555 rule, since it goes beyond the state density program, constitutes a possible constraint on housing production?
Definitely. I think by our, if our HPP requires mod or low units, and we don't do something to align the HPP with the state density bonus law, it would constrain the ability to use the state density bonus law, density bonus and incentive concessions, and therefore constrain housing production.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I, my other question is, you may have a number, I think a number of the issues of the other issues that you raised in your letter were addressed by, were addressed by staff in their presentation. I just wondered if you had any, you know, sort of outstanding issues that you wanted, having now heard the staff presentation, if there were any outstanding issues that you felt needed further discussion?
Thanks. Yeah, there's one issue that I don't think you guys have discussed, which is the implementation of the housing element requiring updates to various city plans and ordinances, right? The Duluth Downtown Community Plan, Bergman Area Plan, zoning ordinance, land use circulation, I'm sorry, and the LCP land use plans. And just a clear statement, which you have approved, which you have consistently done in other planning documents of this type of nature, that until these plans are updated, if there's any conflicts that arise between the housing element and these other documents, that the policies in the housing element take precedence. I think that's an important one. I also wasn't sure, I didn't hear addressing with respect to the streamlining that, where it currently says that it's only code-compliant projects and products that are granted a minor modification. Asking you guys to revisit that in light of looking at what major modifications are again, including this commission, like, I believe unanimously voting for the VONs projects, which needed three extra floors for a grocery store, and I believe that same floor height is needed even just to accommodate the vertical clearance needing for residential loading, and that's a major modification today in the code. And since you guys are going to be revisiting those, what the major minor and waivers are, I would just ask you, perhaps it's better rather than defining minor modifications to say that the city will look at each mod waiver thoughtfully, you know, when you're going through implementation, and figure out which ones should continue to allow you to qualify for streamlining or not. And on that point, the streamlining ordinance expires at the end of this year. And while I appreciate staff and I appreciate wanting to look at thoughtfully the permanent streamlining ordinance, and that may take until March, I really think a commitment to having that extended by, the emergency ordinance extended in the meantime, is important because otherwise, you would be creating a new constraint on housing compared with the current process today if you have a gap in time.
I have a question.
Moving the part over there.
Paula? You still there? I want to go to Sean's question about the AHPP and the density bonus program, and why having an additive process for those two programs is a problem, because I think it's kind of hard to understand. So let me posit a potential project to you and see if you agree. If you have a project that's going for the full density bonus for very low income, so it's 15% very low, you then put the HPP on top of that. So not only would they have to provide 50% very low, you got the density bonus, they would have to provide 5%, if we go with the 555 route, they would have to provide 5% low income and 5% moderate income, which would be in a 25% inclusionary housing requirement. Is that your understanding?
That's exactly the problem, and they won't happen. So you won't get full density bonus.
So you don't, you don't consider that a feasible way to approach it?
No, I think you're constraining the housing. You're saying, okay, you're only going to get a five, you're going to be based on the 5% very low, which means only a density bonus of 20%, and we're getting less units on a site that's already developing, where I think we want to say, if the site's already developing with housing, let's take full advantage of our law and estate law and get all the units there.
So do you think that leaving a straight across the board 15% without the income distribution would solve that problem?
Yeah, I think that's fine. And I think, again, I understand the policy desires to have the low and the mod units. I just think we need to find a fix to allow them to count. If, if we want to require low and mod, fine, but let's let them count towards achieving density bonus, which we can do under our local ordinance, and the incentive concession.
Yeah, but can you, can you add very low, low and mod, and kind of come up with like three, actually, low and mod don't go down to 5%. They could not qualify for state density bonus. It would only be the very-
The state density bonus is a minimum. I'm saying in our local ordinance, we could say-
I see, okay.
We know the state density bonus says you can only get 50% if you do 15% very low, but we're going to say in Santa Monica, because we value low and mods, you, as long as you do 15% total, you get the full 50% bonus.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify on that, if I may, that would, we would still be demanding the low and the mod in that mix, but we'd be giving credit as if it were 15% very low. Is that what your, your understanding we're saying? Okay, I just, okay. Yeah, that's where I thought you were going. Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our next and last public speaker. And our speaker is Daniel Friedman. Hello, Daniel, you are now off mute and live in the meeting. You have three minutes for your comments.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Friedman. I'm with Jeffrey Mingles, Butler Mitchell. Hope all is well. Thank you for all your service to our community and to the city and to staff. What a, what a, what a process you guys are going through, so I have a lot of respect. So I'll try and keep my comments very short because I know you have a lot to cover. Very quickly, I submitted a letter earlier today, just echoing a concern that has been raised previously, which is mostly being addressed, and we greatly appreciate it, which is primarily this issue of providing and permitting housing on first-floor levels, on ground-floor levels, particularly in existing buildings and also in new buildings. The, it looks like this is primarily being addressed, and there is guidance in the staff report and in the draft document encouraging, or permitting, I should say, residential on ground-floor levels. But there seems to be kind of a caveat in there with respect to it being in mid-block locations. While I do understand the concept of trying to encourage commercial activities on corners, on corner spaces, I do think there's a chance for some confusion about whether that's within a certain distance from the corner, or whether it's a parcel. And to the extent that it's a parcel, and so you have a parcel that's on the corner, that would not be able to enjoy the same benefit of providing residential on the ground floor, I think it could be problematic, in part because we have some very large corner parcels. And so I just want to, I understand that this may not be final language, that this may be massaged later when a final ordinance comes back after the Housing Element. But I would ask, if possible, that there be some further clarification about this distinction between mid-block locations and corner locations. And if possible, I'd ask that it be kind of delineated down to the foot level, if possible, to specify that, you know, it's within 25 feet or 10 feet, or whatever it may be, of a corner that you would have a limitation on residential uses. But all other segments of the building frontage would be permitted to convert ground floor to residential uses. So that's really my only ask, that there be some clarification provided, because I do think, you know, as this housing element moves forward to the council, and then on to approval, and then towards implementation, I do think a lot of people will be trying to understand what they can and cannot do, and I think having some clarity about that, or guidance even, would be helpful. So with that, I thank you for all your assistance and all your work and all your dedication to the city of Santa Monica, and appreciate being, given the opportunity to speak.
Daniel, hang tight. Commissioner Landris?
Sure. Right. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Friedman, Dan. The, we discussed this at the August meeting, I believe, and I, and I believe we directed that the word parcel be taken out. We had a long conversation about feet, I believe, and did not arrive at a resolution. I just, while we have you on the phone, want to know if you were familiar with that conversation, and I don't know if staff can provide a quick clarification for us while you're with us? Because I thought we resolved this.
I missed that, so I must have missed that part of the conversation at the August meeting, but I would be happy to hear clarification if there's something to be provided.
Are we able to ask staff for that now?
Yes.
Just, we got, just deal with it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that level of specificity is really going to be discussed during like the zoning code amendments. You know, we discuss red lines and what have you. So I think we're, we understand the issue, obviously, and I'm not sure there's any, you know, that we need to make any change to the housing element to capture that, because that certainly is going to be something through implementation.
Yeah, I don't think there's any change to the housing element that we need to be made, but in terms of a staff report, since it, we did direct that it be a more general conversation, if that could be taken out of future staff reports, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I remember a long conversation we were talking about hidden doors and Nina not, not caring where the door was if we didn't see it.
Okay.
Understood.
So, thank you, thank you to both of you for your- Um, so, thank you, um, thank you to both of you for your public comment. Um, so now I'm going to go back to my reply. Um, or, um, if everyone could go around and tell me which programs or appendices they want to talk about. Uh, Commissioner Fresco.
Why don't we just go through the items that were attached to the, uh, I mean, we don't need to go through the whole housing element again.
No, I understand, but I was going to try to even reduce the universe even more.
Well, they're scattered around, so I'll tell you, I did write this down. One, four, two. And then, of course, I had a few ideas while I was listening to what just went on, where I have no idea where they go.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Lambert?
I actually only have six programs that I wanted to discuss, and briefly. And they are change number three, which is program 1A. Change number six, which is program 1F. Change number nine, which is program 1J. Change number 10, which is 2C. Then change number 12, which is 2E. And I wanted to talk about 1K, but staff seems to have corrected the situation somewhat in the chart, but not in the, in the F attachment. They forgot to include the housing word in that, according to Rachel. Um, and then I have, then I have two, um, two attachment pages I wanted to discuss, E10 and E44.
Uh, Commissioner Landers?
Okay, I have change numbers. I don't have program numbers because of the way I prepared it. So I'm assuming that I'm, I'm-
Okay.
I'm assuming that most of the-
I'm going to stop you, because I think it's very-
Change three, change three?
No, she's stopping me.
Change number three, change number, oh, sorry.
Well, because if we have different ways that we've, it does, I think we're not all on the same page. So let's go back to Nina's suggestion, let's just quickly, but let's, let's be brief.
But I think they're, I think they're visible, because I, I was not, Nina and Leslie mentioned some of mine. So I was just trying to, um, I was just going to, some of these are text changes, so they're more easily, I think you'll, you'll see them, you can just sort of mark the boxes. So I'm also wanting to talk about three, um, wanting to talk about 11, um, per Ms. Larmour, I think that the, the, this density bonus concession issue. Um, 12, Leslie's already brought up. Uh, I want to talk about 14. Um, it's a language issue in the way we worded it. Um, 16, change number 16, these are PC changes. Um, and then, um, I have a suggestion for cha- for change number 19 to try to avoid not being aligned with staff. I wanted to talk about, um, staff recommended change number one to address the, what I think is extra housing, right? Where we can, where we could get housing without it being 50%. And then, this was missing. Uh, we had talked about it, and then I did not see it acknowledged in a revision to the, um, in the addenda. We reopened the question of the 55-foot definition of the high rises, and I believe that we had asked for further study of the issue and consultation with the city of LA regarding seismic and fire safety considerations, rather than just saying, yeah, no. So, um, I'd like to reopen that, but that's my list.
Um, Commissioner Raskin, and then Commissioner Reese.
Uh, so if, if we are going to go through the whole thing, then I won't give you specifics, but if you'll want, uh, items, I can, I can say it. Not if we're going to go through the whole thing, then I'll just-
Let's just go through the whole thing, because I, yeah. Okay, let's, let's just start going through the whole thing. Staff, if you could, so let's start with 1A. Um, who wants to start with 1A? Commissioner Fresco? We can't hear you, Commissioner Fresco.
Are you talking about program 1A or change number one?
I'm going-
Can we just look at-
I am referring to program-
Go, yeah, we're going to end up go rehashing the whole thing. We just need to go through the addenda, don't we?
Right.
That's what I'm saying. I was referring to programs in the addenda, so-
Right, like, addends are out of order.
Right, they're ordered by change number. Can we go by change number?
Sure.
That would just be fast.
And staff, put up the presentation.
Not the presentation, the actual addenda sheet, please.
The addenda sheet, yeah, exactly.
So does anybody have an issue with change one?
I do actually have something I want to say.
What, let's, let's-
Um, well, when we discussed that the other day, I had read SB 9, but I hadn't read it closely. And I realized that this would have horrible, horrible implications for historic preservation to remove that demolition, uh, provision that they built in there. And that was actually, I believe, part of what was intended, since there were other references to historic preservation in that part of SB 9. And so I really think this is not something that we should be, uh, putting. I know it says "may" include here, but I think it's a really, really bad idea. And, uh, I believe our EIR reinforces this. Uh, you know, we often say that our historic resources are protected by our landmarks ordinance, but this would open up the door to so many more applications that, and our, our ordinance is good, but our program is really weakened right now. And as the person who probably personally writes at least 50% of the applications, I can tell you I can't write anymore, and we will lose historic resources.
So would it make sense to add, I, I actually thought historic buildings were exempt from SB 9?
Those are already landmarked buildings, not HRI. But under CEQA, we study that HRI buildings are also considered historic resources until proven otherwise, or even things that aren't listed at all that we later discover. And we have to at least be able to rely on our HRI to protect, and that 25% prohibition on demolition is comparable directly to our ordinance provision for demolition that protects HRI properties.
Okay, so let's let Heidi speak, and then Commissioner, uh, Fondabarnardi, and then Commissioner Lambert.
Just a very brief clarification on historic resources under CEQA. The HRI, they are not, um, our HRI, properties on the city's HRI are not presumptive resources. Landmarks and designated, um, structures of merit are presumptive resources, but properties outside of the downtown that are listed on the HRI are not presumptive.
Thank you, Commissioner Fondabarnardi, and then Commissioner Lander, uh, Lambert.
Yeah, I, I would like to second what Commissioner Fresco said. You know, SB 9 is a very controversial bill. It was hammered and shaped to try to meet as many of the, let's say, different constituencies that were engaged. This is what they came up with, 25%. For us to increase that, I think is saying that we want more damage to fabric of our own one districts, when there is already enough built in with what they've done yet. So I would say we should stick with the original text of SB 9 and not increase the radiation that's going to propagate from it.
Commissioner Lambert, and then Commissioner Landers.
I, I mean, I want to say that I, I, as a former landmark commissioner myself, I sympathize with, um, with Nina, but I, I really think we need to narrow this definition. I, I would not support exempting every property on the HRI outside of downtown, because as Heidi pointed out, they're not presumptive resources. Um, if we could somehow say whatever properties on the HRI are above a certain category, I think it's, it's like, and I need to refresh my memory, there's a, there's a determination as to whether they are potentially landmarks, um, merits, structures of merit or not. But every single, there are hundreds and hundreds of properties on the HRI, and I think this would limit, really limit housing production if, uh, if we include all of them. So I, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Yeah, but- Lambert, hold on, Commissioner Landers, and then Commissioner Fresco.
Thanks. I have, I have a question for Heidi. Um, I, we, we got a letter from Santa Monica Forward suggesting that the 25% demolition limitation was really addressed at, um, renter occupied or pre- recently renter occupied structures. Um, and I, and that, for that reason, they did not want us to expand this, because they wanted to protect, um, single-family rental housing, which is something that Commissioner Raskin, um, has brought up on multiple occasions, rightly, and rightly so. I mean, I'm looking at Sunset Park, where so many people are getting already, just already getting priced out of, um, single-family rentals. So, um, if, pending clarification from Heidi about what this really means, um, I would not support, uh, undoing, you know, I would not support making it easier to demolish more housing, um, because I would be very concerned on the impact on, um, single-family rental housing. I, I don't want to encourage, yeah.
Um, one other note is that SB 9 says in the code that the local jurisdiction has the right to change those things. So why don't we just not put it in the housing element and have a robust discussion about this later when we implement? And I, I'd like to make a straw poll motion vote on that count, that we just remove it from this list and discuss it further when it's time to implement SB 9 into our code.
I'll second that. Yeah.
For discussion? Can I ask, is from a, from a housing element standpoint, does it make sense they were going to implement this, implement, implement this, but leave ourselves open to a policy discussion about it? Um, I would, I would think that that might be helpful for, it, it might be helpful to have this in our housing element right now, but maybe there's a way to water it down, so we get a little more opportunity to have that robust discussion.
Um, to the makers of the motion, would you be open to having the program say, "implement SB 9 in a meaningful way, period"?
I don't think we need to, we have to do that anyway.
Can I say something?
We're told by-
I was next, I think, I, I think I was next.
Commissioner Landers, then Commissioner Lambert.
I, I wanted to offer a friendly amendment that said, "implement SB 9 in a meaningful way that advances the city's, um, fair housing goals", because fair housing includes preservation of people in existing rental homes.
Commissioner Lambert?
I just want to say-
Not friendly to the maker?
Excuse me, no. Oh, I'm, she called on me, I'm sorry.
No, is it friendly to the maker or not?
No, I think it's redundant.
Okay.
I, I just want to point out something about single-family homes. I don't know, there are well over a thousand single-family homes on R2 lots through the city. And I don't know how many of those are owner occupied versus renter occupied, but I suspect there are a good number of them that are owner occupied, and they are underdeveloped, because they're on R2 sites. And I really don't want to, um, frankly, even if they're renter occupied, those are, those are housing sites that are not being developed.
Okay, is there any more discussion on this motion, or should we take a straw poll? Okay, let's take a straw poll. And just to clarify to the maker of the motion, so your motion is to take it out of the housing?
Right, since we're going to do it anyway.
This would be to, uh, delete program 4E, as proposed, so. Uh, Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
No.
Commissioner Landers?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin? Commissioner Reese?
No.
And Chair Pastor?
Yeah. That passes on a four to three vote to remove program 4E from the housing element. Okay, anybody have anything on two, which is policy 1.9?
Other than that was corrected by staff in the presentation, and we follow their correction.
Agreed. I don't think I heard anything on that, but, and if I'm, if I go, if I go fast and you need me to back up, let me know. Uh, moving on to three, which I believe is 1A. Who wants to start off?
I would like to.
Yeah.
Okay, I, um, I would like just to make this, um, relatively small change. I, I think there's been a great deal of confusion about minor, major mods and waivers. And I think that Paula's point that we approved the Vons project with several of those, and it was still an HAA project makes it even more confusing. So I would add, instead of saying, uh, I would substitute instead, instead of saying granted a minor modification, do we add language, um, that they are granted specified modifications slash waivers to be established in the zoning ordinance? You can actually hash this out and know what we're talking about when we're doing that.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it, because it's what I was going to say, um, as will be established, yeah.
What did I say? I said should be established.
Should be established, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that point? Uh, Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I wasn't in favor of the, uh, original changes. I, I mean, it, it, it makes no sense to distinguish between minor modifications and major modifications here. It's essentially the light version of a variance. And, uh, you know, I, I just don't think we should be, um, I don't think we should be going down this path. Um, can I say, wait, uh, can I just suggest one, let's just deal with one thing as well, which is staff, um, push the deadline to March. And this is the item that refers to our streamlining ordinance that expires at the end of December. So if it's friendly to you, Leslie, I'd like to add, um, the, that the extension of the IZO is going to happen by December 31st.
Absolutely.
Okay. Whatever else happens can happen by March, but the IZO cannot be allowed to lapse.
I agree totally.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that? Okay, so let's, um,
Do we need to vote, or no?
Yes, we should.
It was a motion, yeah.
Paul, staff?
Are we still here?
Yeah, we're waiting on staff, I think, to make a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was waiting for the, the motion, but, uh, so this is, uh- Yeah, um, so-
Let's repeat the motion if you're not 100%.
Oh, no, no, I, I have it, I just, um, wasn't sure if you were, you were going to make that formally. But what I heard was, um- Yeah, non-downtown projects, yep, okay. Um, Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landers?
Yes.
Miss- Commissioner Raskin?
No.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor?
Yes. Okay, I think that takes care of three, uh, let's move on to four.
Well, there's no, there's no September 31st, so maybe it should be September 30th.
Okay, I think, I think we don't have to make a motion. Um, okay, moving on to five, which is program 1C. Okay, moving on to six. Um, I see some hands. Okay, let's start with Commissioner Fresco this time, and then go to Commissioner Lambert.
Um, in this one, uh, staff, uh, says that they don't recommend it, oh, wait, do they say they, it doesn't say whether they're going to go with this or not?
I'll say, okay to delete, I think.
That was in the presentation, not in the table.
So, yeah, they're okay to delete, but they're not okay with providing a range of, of FAR and heights. And that's really what I wanted to talk about, was that range. So do you want to talk about it here, or do you want to talk about it when we get to nine?
Uh, I think it's in both, so why don't you start the conversation here?
Right, well, uh, in nine, they, staff specifically cites considerations about, uh, AFFH, the fair housing thing. Um, and, uh, because this was really triggered by Main Street, although I also think that we need to address the, a uniform set of heights for the entire city, except for Main Street, which is higher. Uh, I just really, I have knowledge and evidence that, uh, this actually isn't, uh, inappropriate for our fair housing goals. And there's even, uh, maps and diagrams in our housing- housing element, some of the new incredible maps that were added, for example, the one on page seventy-one that basically shows there are still mixed range of incomes in Ocean Park and, and then the map on page seventy-nine, which shows that there's a, that Ocean Park is becoming exclusive and that there's a high gentrification factor going on there. And that incentivizing this kind of market rate housing in Ocean Park is, are especially on Main Street is, would actually exacerbate that gentrification in Ocean Park and that raising these heights this way in order to allow that much new market rate housing at once in that location would actually harm our goals. So I don't agree that it would be in conflict with the AFFH.
Commissioner Lambert and then Commissioner Raskin.
Well, I, I think if I'm, if I remember correctly, on the twentieth, we went through a discussion of whether to do a range or do this chart. And the upshot, and I think we agreed, was to do the chart because we didn't think a range would satisfy HCD and that's why we're all here. So I think taking these FARs and heights out, that's what's being proposed, is a really bad idea if we want to get a certified housing element. My point is, I, I think we should make a gesture and actually agree with the city council on something. And that something is putting back the, the base amount of the inclusionary housing without doing the income distribution, right? I, I mean, I think that makes sense. It'll give some certainty to the product, to the housing element. And it's again, what city council asks us to do. And I support it. So I would move that we put the base number for the affordability, inclusionary units for, for both the DCP and the rest of the city back in the charts, but not the income distribution.
I'll second that. Do you want to include the offsite as well?
Sure. Where is that?
We might as well. So fifteen and twenty, twenty and twenty-five and twenty-five and three, right?
Right. And there was some concern about the offsite for tier three not being feasible, but I'm not sure what to do with that.
Well.
Commissioner Raskin?
I'm seconding it. That's all.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm still of the belief that we should just take the chart out. I mean, you know, if HCD comes back and says that this chart is what makes, you know, not, not having the chart is what makes our housing element non-compliant. I, I'm willing, I'm willing to live with that. I, I think that, you know, we provided enough detail in other portions of our housing element to substantiate assumptions we're making about development capacity. I don't think we need to include this here. And I, I don't think I would get support for a substitute motion to just delete it entirely. But I, 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 that's, that's where I'm at. If somebody else wants to back me up, feel free to make the motion and I'll second it. But yeah, that's, that's where I'm at.
Can I say something? I just want to point out. Commissioner Fauna Bernardi? Okay, what we discussed on last Monday night, and that is, the entire site capacity analysis is based on these charts. So I think it'd be kind of disingenuous not to include them. It'd also not be transparent for the public if they don't see how we did the SSI calculus, exactly what we use to do that, as are the inclusionary numbers. So I, I think for the interest of transparency, we need to let the public know how we've come up with the numbers we did. And that's why I'd like to speak from there.
Commissioner Fauna Bernardi?
Yeah, I, I would support the motion because in a funny sort of way, these numbers are the core of everything we've been doing the last year and a half, you know? We had all these HH and R analyses and they all pointed to these numbers. So these are the closest real numbers we have. The interesting thing about the distribution is if you just have that basic number, let's say fifteen percent, is that going to basically mean that everybody's going to head over to mod or everyone's going to head over to very low or extremely low? And is that, is that distribution decay or dominance of one over the other in any way negative? Or are we just happy to get the overall percentage that's we're, that's we're getting from the get-go?
I, I think that the, the distribution, Mario, will be, I'm sorry, the distribution will be include, I mean, we can't just say fifteen percent across the board. So I think at some point, either the city council or when we do the ZO, there will be a distribution provided. But at this point, I think it's premature. And, and I also, I mean, the problem with the distribution that was given to us was it doesn't reflect the RENA proportions, which is a real problem.
Doesn't reflect the what? Can you repeat that for?
Yeah, the RENA, the RENA low income.
Okay, I got it. I got it. Okay.
Um, is there any more discuss? So, sorry, I'm not clear as to what the motion is at this point. Is the motion on the table to put back in the onsite and offsite?
Yes.
Percentages of fifteen?
Yes.
And is that motion for numbers six and nine?
It's one F, one F and one J.
Right. But can I, can I, okay. So, thank you. Um, I'm, I struggle with this because on Monday night I was with, you know, I'm, I was with Ellis on, on taking out these tables. I believe that the purpose of the tables is to back up our work. And that's, when we're backing up our work, that's what the appendices are for. And it's not about not being transparent. It's about saying, this is the basis on which we have made these findings and these programs. If we put them in our programs, then we're making our methods, our outcomes. And I'm, I'm not convinced that that is the wisest thing. So I'm really torn. On the one hand, I, if we're going to keep the charts, I would second Leslie's motion as I did to, to, to put the fifteen and the twenty back in, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty. But principally, I actually think this should be moved to the appendix because it is the basis of our work. It is not our work. It will be our work in the ZO, but it's not our work for the housing element.
And then Commissioner Raskin?
Did you call on me?
I did.
I, I guess, I mean, Sean, from my standpoint, well, number one, I, we should ask Heidi, but I don't think it matters whether it's in the appendix or the text, but still the housing element is still has the force of whatever law housing element has. I think for the standpoint of transparency, so the public can understand what we're doing and how we did it, it needs to be in the text rather than buried in an appendix. Because I think it looks like we're hiding it. I would much rather have it in the text from the standpoint of, of public, the public knowing what we're doing.
Can I respond to that? Can I respond to that?
Yeah, quickly, but I feel like we're repeating the discussion we had the other day.
Yeah, no, I have a solution. I want to offer a solution. I just want to offer a different solution, which is that the type, the table title is the problem. Okay? These are not necessarily the new downtown community plan development standards. These are, these are either anticipated development standards or these are, this is what the feasibility analysis has shown us ought to be the development standards. But the table title implies that we are making this policy. And that's why we're getting nervous because we need to go back and fix it later. So what if, what if we retitled the table to say something like anticipated or baseline or preliminary standards? So that it's clear that we're not like locking ourselves in because that's what a lot of this, this language at the bottom is, is, is doing, sort of saying, here are the numbers, but we're going to change them later.
Well, they don't mean anything, they don't mean anything until they're in the ZO anyways, Sean.
Yeah, but we want.
Right. I, I think that Sean.
Hold on. Commissioner Raskin is next in line and then Commissioner Fresco.
And I, I see that Heidi is here. So maybe should I want to say something before we continue?
Just something very quickly. So if something, if, if, so there are many different aspects of the, of the, which is of the housing element. As you saw, staff move certain language to policy, that's because, you know, we have more flexibility with respect to implementation of policies. Implementation of programs is going to be what HCD measures us against when we report to HCD every, every year. So I just wanted everybody to keep that in mind. So if we have something in a program, we need to demonstrate our ability to have met the program, the way that it's written, or if we don't, we have to explain why we didn't. And that's a process where we, we take an action that's inconsistent, then we have problems.
And Commissioner Raskin and then Commissioner Fresco?
Yeah. And that's, that's exactly why we should not be saying here that we're raising heights on Main Street and PICO. And, you know, there's a difference between, you know, making it an assumption on which you make your data. I mean, Commissioner Lambert has just said this, but we should not be essentially creating development standards here that we'd be bound by later. So I'll make the motion that we delete the chart.
Substitute motion?
Substitute motion, yeah.
There is second for that, to that motion before we get to Commissioner Fresco?
I will second it.
You're deleting it all together?
Yeah, that was what I was going to ask. Do you want to delete it altogether? Or do you want to move it to a policy and say, our policy would be to meet these feasibility numbers that were provided to us or to come up with a combination of FARs and heights that will retain the housing capacity citywide that these numbers describe?
Ellis, can you live with that?
Uh, I, I'd rather just, just it out entirely.
I'll withdraw my second for the purposes of discussion and second that if that's a motion, Nina.
Okay.
All right. All right. So move this, move this forward. I'll, I'll, I'll live with Nina's proposal.
Okay.
Okay. So just to clarify, are we keeping in the percentages, the fifteen percent, the twenty percent in the program and moving the, the rest of the table heights and FARs to a policy? And then we're also going to retain the existing language about we reserve the right to tweak these a little bit as appropriate with the goal of maintaining the overall capacity? Is that?
I would move the whole thing to policy, Nina.
No, no, no. Can I just, as the maker of the motion, I would ask that we separate the fifteen percent from the chart and appropriate.
This is a substitute motion, Leslie. This is Nina's motion now. It's a substitute motion.
So I'm asking the maker of the motion, Nina, whether or not you're, you want to move both the percentage, overall percentage and the FARs and heights, or just the overall percentage of heights and FARs?
Well, the percentage, these FARs reflect the percentage. So the percentage has to go with these FARs and heights because that's what's feasible at these FARs and heights. So I think they have to go together. And then the distribution is something that was tested, but if we want to change the distribution, we might also want to change the height so that it's still feasible. Or you see what I'm saying? Or we might also want to increase the height of one of these zones by a lot and require twenty percent because we think we'll get a lot of units that way. I mean, there's just a lot to discuss. So I think it all goes together. So yes.
Yep.
Move that to there.
That's my second.
Okay. And does your motion include maintaining the five-five-five distribution or not?
No, that part will leave because that's something that we can play with and wiggle around with as we adjust other things relative to where things are in the city and what we think the real capacity of those areas are in terms of development. I mean, we can just look at that five-five to decide where we might want to surpass this.
I have a question. I have a question.
And I would add as the seconder to that, I would add that we don't want to reference the five-five-five because it may be seen as a constraint on housing production. And I don't want to give anybody a leg up to criticize us. So I want to leave that out.
I have a question of staff. Can I ask staff a question?
Yes.
Does, does the planning commission have authority over the AHPP? Is it in the ZO?
So, so technically the AHPP is not in the ZO. It's in Article nine. It's in Division six. It's not, I, I don't think the planning, you know, I, I wouldn't describe it as authority necessarily. Clearly, the planning commission works with the AHPP. You establish, you know, housing policy, especially how it relates to land use and development. But it is Division six. So it's not.
The housing commission is actually the body that makes the formal recommendation, is that correct?
I, I would not characterize it that way. No. You know, I think you're, you're certainly, the, the planning commission can certainly make recommendations on the AHPP.
Okay, let's, I think we've had a very robust discussion on this. So let's do, so again, I'm just going to make sure I'm going to clarify the motion for everyone. We are voting on moving the entire table to a policy. However, we are still removing the five-five-five distribution. And we are going to continue to have the language that says that we reserve the right to make tweaks, but we want to preserve the overall capacity as shown in the SSI. Mario, did I see a hand? If so.
Are you clarifying? I just wanted to hear the motion before we voted. You clarified it.
So let's, so, and this is for one, for programs six and nine?
Right.
Chair, can I just, sorry, can, I, I'm sorry to do this, but I'm just kind of confused because the, the table isn't really a policy. Like, it's not, it's very, it's specific numbers. So I'm not, I'm not sure that, that really works.
Can I try?
I think we're trying to think of a way to, to carry forward your intent here.
Right. So how about the, how about the, that we are creating a policy that says, rather than moving our reserve the right, okay, what if the policy is the city shall establish FAR height and affordability requirements necessary to achieve feasibility, right? As reflected in the following table?
One thing, does that?
Including but not limited to the rezoning or the creation of new zoning districts to facilitate advancement of housing goals under historic probation, you know, open space, good design, light and air and, you know, apple pie.
This is not a policy, Sean. Program.
Yeah, I'm looking for.
You guys, whoa, 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 stop. We have a motion on the table. We may, some of us may disagree with the motion. If there's a legal issue, Heidi, I want to hear it. If not?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's just, it's not, that traditionally would not be something you would put in for a policy. The programs are, are goal, are items that we have to achieve in order to meet our RENA goals and to meet our, you know, to satisfy our SSI. This program and one J are in for two reasons amongst others. But one is to ensure feasibility and the other one is to ensure site capacity. So the program needs to demonstrate that this, how the city is going to be meeting at least those two objectives. So that's why it was written the way that it was previously, which was basically you set feasible amounts based on the AHPP. That was the summary of those two. Some additional information was added when the red lines got pushed out beyond that to demonstrate how we were going to, to actually achieve those two goals. So moving it into a policy isn't necessarily going to, to demonstrate to the state how we are going to make those two, those two objectives happen. So you could, if you wanted, simply remove the table and leave, and just not put it in a policy and still have the program the way that you have suggested with taking the numbers out. So just not putting them anywhere else.
I'm going to look to the maker of the motion. Does anything you've just heard change your motion?
So basically, I just want to say it back and make sure I understood completely. I'm, I just opened up my housing element redline. So you're suggesting that we, that it would be more appropriate if we just remove this HRNA feasibility table and, and say, we're going to upzone according to make these current things feasible? Is that what you just suggested, Heidi?
Yes, more or less. And then you could leave in, you know, your language about, you know, based on, you could, you could add language that says feasibility, you know, the original estimates are based on the feasibility studies dated such and such, like from the title. And then they can be, then they can be adjusted up or down, but you're not actually listing them. You can refer to the study and the results, but not actually list them here. And they don't have to be listed elsewhere. And then they're kind of incorporated in, in that manner.
That sounds like a really good idea to me. So yes.
So can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion? Sean, hold on.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we, because I really want everyone to know exactly what the language is that we're voting on. So I would propose that we put a pin in this and we allow staff to work on some language that we can look at together after we've gone through some of the other items and that we come back and that this is the intent, we've now expressed the intent, and let's see if we can get some language that gets us there.
I agree, but can I ask a question before we move on so that staff can work on it based on the answer to my question?
Yes.
Do we have a policy? Do we have a policy, and I don't know if it's helpful or not, but do we have, this came up, right, this came up in the, in the DCP a few years ago, right, when, when there was a debate about whether the AHPP supported housing production, and then the feasibility study showed that it didn't, and then we had, you know, we were living with the consequences of that? Do we have, or do we need, a policy to parallel this program to require feasibility analyses to support these changes? Or is that already established by state law? Or, I mean, is it helpful to backstop this program with no numbers with a policy that says there should always be numbers?
I don't really understand what you just asked, to be quite honest.
I think what Heidi said answers your question, and that referring to a study that we have is the way to do it.
Yeah, okay. Then let's do that. Yep.
Okay, so what Elisa said, and get language from staff and then vote later.
That's right. If I may, before we move on, can we just, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. With our vote on number three, Leslie's motion to remove the references to minor mods was, the word, the words appear twice in that text, and I believe our motion was to remove it in both places. And so I just want to make sure that we were all on the same page about that.
That's true, that's true.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Can we separate the inclusionary base number from all this stuff about the charts? I'm not really sure where that's ended up.
It's leaving with the chart.
The 20% is leaving? Oh, geez.
Yeah.
No, I thought that the 15, the 15% was staying.
I want it to stay.
Let's see what staff wants us to do, because I think the issue is that, let's let staff draft language for us that they believe is legally defensible, and let's, I think that's a great suggestion, Chair. Let's, let's let them come up with some language and then we can play with it later, because I think the issue is that whatever gets put into the program, we're locked into.
Go. That's what we agreed to do, so.
Yeah, so let's do that, and let's move on to seven, please. Okay, does anybody have anything on seven? What about eight? Eight, uh, nine? Okay, we talked about nine, so we're gonna get back there. Whoa, stop. So 10 is program 2C. I believe, Leslie, you had 2C on your list.
Go on.
Yeah. Okay, I guess let's come back to that. Uh, 11, which is 2D. She also had something on that.
I had 11 as well.
Okay, Sean, why don't you start with 11?
Okay, so this is what, um, this is what we were talking about in the public comment. And so, uh, do we want to strengthen this language? Essentially, I, I'm concerned that our, our, our split, our, I support our split, I want to have a split, but I'm concerned that our split is potentially a constraint. So do we want to strengthen the language that, um, that if we, if we do the 555, that we're, that we're still giving a state density bonus at 15? Because otherwise, they could turn around and say, we're doing 15, and we could have done, you know, extremely low. I don't know what the law is, so I want to raise the question so that we have, have it and deal with it and move on.
Are you asking whether or not we believe that it's a constraint to set up the, the distribution?
Yeah. Do you believe that the distribution is a constraint since that, given that a developer could walk in and say, I'm happy to do 15% affordable, but I want to do it all, you know, very low so that I can get my 50% state density bonus?
I mean, do you, I guess that, I mean, what I'm hearing is, is a question of whether or not the city is required to allow, like, the maximization, or is that a constraint? I mean, I think we would have to look into that. I certainly think that you could, as Ms. Larmour suggested, add language to this program that says, if it, even if it is distributed, that they should be, you know, permitted the number, the amount of density bonus and the number of incentives and concessions you would get for a 15% very low. You could, you could very easily do that.
I would make that motion.
I second that.
Well, look, I'm really supportive of this. I don't want to be in a situation where the AHPP or our housing program stops us from being able to utilize density, the density bonus and the incentives, but I don't understand how we can make, how we can have a different income distribution and understate density bonus, get the incentives. I want, I want my result.
Because, Jim, what it would be is that you would not be getting the bonus or the incentives under the state density bonus law. They would then be under a code program, essentially.
We would not have to, so we're saying we would not have to utilize the state density bonus because we'd be giving all the same incentives and concessions?
And waivers.
I think that's how I understand what's being proposed.
Yes.
Okay, and that's where I want to, that's where I want to get to.
And if I can, as the ma, as the maker of the motion, if I can clarify, I want those moderate rate units. I want private developers to have to build those moderate rate units, but I recognize that in return for building those units, building those units as moderate rate rather than as very low, the developer's gonna want the density bonus. And so the trade off for me, for the city, is that we get the moderate rate units that we've asked for in exchange for that generous view of the density bonus.
I, I'm very confused.
Commissioner Lambert?
I am extremely confused. What concessions are you talking about if we do the income distribution in the AHPP? What are you talking about?
I'm primarily talking about incent, I'm primarily talking about incentives. I'm primarily talking about the 50% density bonus that, that a, that a private developer would get on, on a 15% affordability level relative to, relative to the 20% bonus, I think it's 20, that they would get at 5%.
So, so if somebody came in with a 5% low, 5% very low, 5% moderate, they would get a 50% bonus?
Yeah, because they're doing 15% affordable.
Aside and apart from the state density bonus law?
Correct.
Well, we're applying this, the principle, we'd be applying the, the density bonus levels of the state density bonus law, and we're saying, just because we're asking you to split it a different way, doesn't mean we're not going to give you the, the rate that you asked.
Here's, here's my fear. The city council will take the 5, 5, and 5 and not do your density bonus approach.
I agree, but we should recommend it, we should recommend the more generous approach.
But they're not gonna, they're not gonna ever adopt it.
But we should do the right thing.
And let me just ask one clarifying question. Should the, because I do, I agree with the principle that we want to give people who are doing 15% the same number of concessions they would get under the density bonus. However, they are, you know, those percentages are key to affordability levels. So I'm wondering, should it be low or very low? Because I'm thinking maybe it should be low because that's actually a little bit more of a middle ground.
I, I want to make sure.
Because when, when a developer, right, is doing a moderate income unit instead of a very low income unit, right, that is more revenue for the project.
But fewer tax, they don't get tax credits, the tax, tax credits.
They wouldn't in an AHPP onsite project.
They wouldn't on a density.
Anyway, that's true.
They wouldn't on a density bonus project anyway.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. Fonda Bernardi.
Does that, does our statement as written encourage us to have that discussion? Not right now, but actually, you know, figure out if they can get one or two or three or five. That's what that statement says. We're gonna talk about it. Now, why wouldn't we do it later? We got a lot of stuff to cover tonight. Do we need to solve this one the way we're going, or is it already solved by that statement?
I think that's actually a reasonable thought. The only thing I would add to that is add the word, the words, and density. Well, I would add parking reductions and density. Because it's, because, well, no, but height is, height is an incentive and concession. The things that are in the density bonus law are the density, the parking, and the incentives concession.
Chair, can I just share my screen? And I think I'm hearing what you, just, just to make sure that we capture this, so. But based on what I was hearing the commission's saying, is this maybe a better way to represent what you're saying? Because before, you had requests more than one, instead of that, to maximize incentives and concessions? And then I think you said something about parking.
I guess I would say explore ways for, and the makers of the motion need to agree with this, but I guess I would say something like, explore ways for developers to maximize incentives and concessions, parking reductions, and density as set forth in the state density bonus law.
That is super friendly.
And I think, Mario, that was an excellent point.
That's, that does it, that's, that does it for me, because I think that clarifies what we're trying to accomplish. I think there, we need more, we need more discussion on it, and we need to hear from more, more experts on, you know, what the right combo is.
So we're not deciding on it now?
No, this, the green line. My motion is now this green line right here. This is my motion. I hope Nina still likes it. I guess I want to say housing providers rather than developers, but.
Can't read it. Staff, can you make that bigger? And then Commissioner Raskin, can you, it's your turn.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I think this is probably gonna get taken out by city council.
Of course it will.
You know, I, I don't know, I think, you know, there is a much longer conversation that has to be had about this in the future.
Can I just say something? I totally agree with Alice. The city council's probably never gonna go for this, but what they will go for is the 5, 5, and 5, which does not work with the state density bonus program.
Okay, so do we have a motion? I'm sorry, Jim, were you trying to speak?
Only that, you know, our, our comment is we want to be able to utilize the state law.
Right.
To the council, so they might not support it, but it is state law, and we're trying to just be consistent with state law, is what we're trying to do as a commission.
Right, or at least that's my intent.
Yes, and I would, wait, can we just say, can we, I don't know if it's a term of art, but I'd rather say housing providers than developers, but if we can do that.
Your motion.
I will change the word developers to housing providers. This is a housing program, and the point of it is to be about housing. So that would be, Nina, are you still with me here on seconding?
I love that change. It's my favorite change all night.
We're here to provide housing. We're not.
Okay, can we have a straw, or straw poll, or whatever we're doing?
Okay, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
No.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
No.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor.
Okay, so Commissioner Lambert, we skipped over 10, which I think was one of the items that you wanted.
Did you vote?
Yeah, we didn't hear you vote originally. We didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yes.
Where am I?
I vote yes.
But it doesn't matter. 2C, where are we? I'm sorry. Did I call 2C?
Uh, I believe, yes, you did, or someone did. Someone said 2C.
I can't find it. What, what changed?
N.
What?
Number 10.
N.
This was the one it has, it increases the threshold to six units. Did you have a question about the AHPP? Is that what this?
I don't have a question at all. I, I support that. In fact, that was my idea.
Okay, but is there anything in the rest of the program that you'd like to speak on?
No.
Okay, well, then we're done with that one. So then let's move to 12.
I just want to say, this, because it's a slight change, but I want to be, I, I, staff is disagreeing with this because it thinks that council has given direction with respect to what it considers to be market rate units. I suggested that we use the language in synergy with fair and economically diverse housing to make the point that 200% AMI housing is still an underrepresented category in Santa Monica, as anybody who, you know, makes that much will attest, goes back to our conversations about preserving people in single-family home rentals. So I would like to, I just, I believe we're, we're gonna include this because staff is, is greenlining it, but I really think that we need to make clear that a program to support 200% AMI housing, even though it's not technically affordable housing, does advance our fair housing goals. And I think it's important to stress that.
Commissioner Lambert, and staff, can you make it a little bit bigger? And then Commissioner Raskin?
Um, I agree, but I think the bottom line for city property is what is feasible and what is not. So I did have a change on that, because I think it's sort of a typo. I would say the language to say include, wait a minute, including but not limited to green space, place making, community serving commercial property, and the 20% AMI language.
I'm sorry, and what was the last thing?
The Sean's thing. Put that at the end, including up to 200%. This is including but not limited to green space, place making, community serving commercial, and 200% AMID restricted units. Put it at the end of that phrase. I'd say it's just a typo.
Well, but Leslie, look at the staff presentation, because they, they rewrote it. In the staff presentation, it's a little bit different than what you're, than what you're using, because, because.
Mr. Raskin is next.
All right, so I've been giving this some thought, and, you know, look, if, if we're moving forward, the idea of this moderate income overlay, that's the place where the market is going to be producing moderate income housing itself, you know, maybe not at 200% AMI, but the city on land really should be saved for much lower income categories. So I think the motion that we delete the portion of this that says booting up to 200% AMI, and, I mean, let's be real, city council's not gonna approve that anyway, so, yeah, that's my motion.
Commissioner Fresco?
Um, I agree with Alice. I, I can't even remember how I voted on this. But I'm thinking about it more carefully, I'm realizing that city council wants to basically offer this free land to affordable housing developers, providers, who are using funding and all kinds, and grants and so forth, and they're never gonna get grants or funding for 200% AMI, because it's not affordable housing. And so does this mean that we're suggesting that we should be proposing giving those sites to other kinds of for-profit housing providers? And that doesn't seem like such a great idea when this is a city resource of land. And so I would, I'm, if I voted for it, I'm changing my position. And if I didn't vote for it, that was smart.
Commissioner Lambert?
I, I don't think there's anyone on this commission who would not like to see every piece of city property go for 100% affordable housing. I think we, we all agree with that, okay? The problem is, Fort Worth in Arizona is a great example. You've got, it's a very costly site to develop. You've got two bank leases, you've got the ice skating rink, and you've got city debt on that land that goes on into infinitum. So you're gonna have to find a way to make affordable housing feasible on that site. And I think that's what the city has to be left to do.
I make a suggestion of what I think might be a compromise of what I, I'm hearing from people, which is to change the language to read with consideration of other community-serving, revenue generating uses that are in synergy with fair and economically diverse housing, period.
That's good. That's good.
That's good, but I do.
So then we keep in the concept of, we want it, that, you know, we want to give the option that if there are uses that are going to be a public use for purposes of the Surplus Land Act and uses that we think are going to help pay for the affordable housing on the site.
All right.
Uh, Commissioner Landris?
Okay, so I, yes, that is good. But, you know, a lot of us in this town talk a good game about what a wonderful social housing program Vienna has. And, you know, Vienna, Amsterdam, there are number, Singapore, there are a number of cities around the world that have recognized that housing, including housing for people who don't, you know, who don't qualify for affordable housing, is a public benefit in and of itself. And so I want to make clear, I, I get that this, we can do the tea leaves about the council all the time. That's, that's fine, but we, we said at the beginning of this meeting, we want to make our recommendations consistent with our best advice and with our best thinking. And the truth is that I want to avoid any suggestion that economically diverse housing that is not purely affordable housing is bad. Or, you know, housing, we need, there's, there's.
No, I apologize. Wait, whoa.
I, that's my, no, no, thank you, thank you, thank you, Chair. That's my point. And so I'm willing to make that for the sake of kind of peace and being in alignment with staff. But I think it's very important that this housing element recognize that we cannot produce only barbell housing, that it's not a binary choice of housing for rich people or housing for poor people. We, we just have to make sure that that message gets through in this element. And that's what I was hoping to do with the 200% AMI language. I can live with taking it out, but I can't live with, with, you know, just sort of making the assumption that all housing is binary.
Mr. Lambert?
Nobody disagrees with anything you're saying, Sean. My point is whatever happens on these sites has to pencil. And it's possible that 200% median income doesn't make it pencil. That's my only concern.
Right, so I think the language that we, I hope the language we have expresses that. Who, I don't know if it's Jing or Ross who's controlling, but you just need to delete the piece after the last part of the sentence, including but not limited to, blah, 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 blah. Because I, yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah, and then.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, but it is, it is just occurring, is there a comma after community serving? Yes.
Yeah.
All right, the only reason I'm hesitating, this is like a net, but I think an important net is that. Well, I think it should be community-serving comma, community-serving, revenue generating. I don't know, I know that's a terrible sentence, but I guess my point is that I don't think we want to look at just any revenue generating. We want to look at revenue generating that is in service to the rest of the project and to the community. So now, maybe I'm getting a little.
No, you're, you're, you're right.
Revenue generating uses that are community-serving and in synergy.
There you go. Can I make one, I'm looking at what we deleted. I would suggest, I kind of want to say housing and open space. The, because open space is not always revenue generating in and of itself.
Yes, and that's, that's what I was trying to achieve. Thank you.
Yeah, so it would, yeah, there you go, housing and open space, yeah. There you go.
Okay, have we sufficiently beat that horse and come up with an excellent, an excellent program? Okay, let's do a vote.
Do we vote on it? Do we need to vote on it or not?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Commissioner Raskin?
I'm mute, that's yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Okay, so was that 12? I'm sorry, I lost count.
Yeah, that was 12.
So 13. I don't think anybody had anything about, let's hope not. Um, okay, 14.
Yeah.
I have questions too.
I'll go left, you, you go first, yeah.
Why don't you start us off?
So I guess I'm trying to figure out staff's opposition or staff's concern with this because it says it commit, it conflicts with council, prior council direction about, you know, the four groups or. I just quite, don't quite understand where the opposition is coming to this because it talks about four population groups. We're not, I'm not trying to say, or I don't think we're trying to say we're changing the population groups. We're just trying to focus it on an area. So what am I missing there, staff? What is your concern?
I think the issue here is, it's just sort of generally the approach for the use of, you know, there, there isn't endless amount of housing trust funds. And the city's typical policy is to, you know, how, how best can we leverage use of those funds to help as many people as possible? The way this program is worded, it's, you know, pretty broad or broader than, than what has typically been part of an acquisition rehab program. And I mean, I, I guess I would note also just backing up that the program already says production and preservation. So it, acquisition rehab is kind of subsumed within the preservation umbrella, but also the part about areas of affluence that would generally mean potentially something quite expensive. You know, and that's sort of outside the boundaries again of, of the program or, or the policy, the funding policy that's established for, for the housing trust fund.
I think I understand your response. So I guess I would just say to the commission is that, you know, I think the city will go where they can get their most bang for their buck, but we continually find reasons why we can't pierce the veil of these areas of affluence. And by putting this in here, by saying we should at least look in the, including areas like this, at least we're making an affirmative policy statement that we think it should be there. So I really think that we should continue to support this and hope that it's a recommendation that the, the staff can get behind on it.
Um, I have a question and then Commissioner Lambert. Does, does the full policy cover, so I hear staff saying that part of their concern is about the cost of those units in areas of influence? But if they're not already covenanted, but does this also cover basically like rehab or extension of covenants in those areas?
It could. I, I guess I would also say that, you know, there are already existing programs for Santa Monica residents who are displaced or facing displacement. For example, you know, in, in such situations like Ellis, they already receive priority for the city's below-market rate waiting list. So, so there are existing programs that, that address that. However, if, if the commission would like to keep this in, I mean, there, there's two possible suggestions. We could add, including exploration of acquisition rehab of units or the other option maybe to move this into a policy as an exploration other than the program.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert, you were next, and then Commissioner Raskin.
I, I support the, the intent of this. And I think it's important, if nothing else, symbolically, to pierce the veil, as you said. And so I was supportive. The question I have is how much multifamily really exists in this, these areas, with the exception of Montana, which is almost entirely rent-controlled units? So I'm not sure how, and, and I agree with Jim that the, the population targets, what have you of the housing trust fund are really irrelevant because it doesn't, I mean, those populations could be located in this area as well. So I'm just wondering how applicable this is. And that's, but I still think we should support it symbolically.
I just wanted to follow Jing's. I was looking for language that wouldn't, that would, that would not directly go head-on at council direction. I also think that, and, and this may be an issue on the, on the nature of the program itself. Program 2F, is it exclusively about the housing trust fund? Or is it about the use of funds in general?
It's about the use of funds in general. It's not just about, it's about funding for housing, I guess, yeah.
Right, so I don't think, and I mean, I recognize that we're a little bit outside our lane here, but I, I'll just say this. It is clear that the council has set policy on the use of housing trust funds. We have money coming in from GSH, we have money coming in from, from in Lufes. We have, we, the council has made a series of policies that relate to money that is available quite clearly through money that is raised by Santa Monica from Santa Monica. However, there's money coming down from the state, there will be other dollars coming down over the course of the housing, all the timeframe. For all we know, there may be federal money coming in. And I don't think it's inappropriate for us to be suggesting that as a variety of sources of funding may become available, that we ought to broaden the menu of what we use those funds to do without necessarily changing what the, from Santa Monica for Santa Monica money, you know, is already doing. And in this instance, I would say, you know, it's highly unlikely, but what if there was an old house somewhere in Santa Monica? And somebody said, look, I have plans, I can chop this up into a triplet, you know, into a duplex, a triplex, a quad. I want to house people, you know, I've decided I don't want to leave my house to my, my kids or my cats or whatever, and I want to give it over, I want to sell it for not a lot of money so that it can help people who need help. And it just happens to be an R1 or R2, right? I think that would be an amazing. What?
I think we're going down.
No, but my point is, my point is to not, to not conflict, we're not conflicting with city council policy if we say including exploring, by the way, you just, you could, you could just say exploring conversion rather than acquisition and rehab because you already have acquisition and rehab, right? Conversion to deed-restricted multi-united developments in areas of affluence, you know, and exploring new funds for conversion, like just something that, that makes it clear we're not trying to move, change dollars that are already accounted for. But if new dollars come in, we'd like to focus on the areas of affluence. That's all. Yeah, there you go.
Anything else on this one? Let's try to wrap this up.
I'm done.
Let's wrap this up.
Well, I think the only thing to wrap up is there seems to be an agreement on the commission. It's staff who doesn't support it. So I guess it just gets back to that whole discussion of how does staff present this in the future? And we'll have that at the end of the, the night.
Yeah, but so is the motion to change the language as proposed here?
Yes.
Okay, so who made the motion? I'm sorry, Jim, did you make the motion?
Sean's got the motion for.
Sean's got the motion, okay.
Well, Jing did, and I'll make the motion on behalf of Jing.
And who's the second?
Second, this was my issue.
Okay, so can we do a vote, please?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Um, okay, let's move on to 15 and Vice Chair Reese. Can you take over the meeting for a couple of minutes?
Yep. Does anybody have issues with 15 they want to talk about?
Yep.
Okay, get that moving right along. 16?
Yep. Um, I would like to, I just, I, I appreciate staff's redlining here. I would like to make clear that we are going to permit, we're going to take an expansive view of ancillary, of ancillary uses. And I would like to find some language that would help us do that. I'm thinking about a social impact cafe. You know, St. Monica's has holy grounds, for example. And I want to make sure that, you know, Beth's Shire Shalom could have one or St. Paul's or the Sogga, the Gakai folks on, on Pico, all of which, you know, all of whom have, have parking lots that could be developed, so.
Yes, specific language you want to propose?
I'm, I, I would say for the primary community assembly use and appropriate ancillary use.
On or above the first, okay.
On or above the ground floor. Is staff cool with that? I just want to check if staff is cool with that. They know where I'm going with this, but.
Okay, but do we have a second for that?
Um, can I just say that I sort of remembered having suggested a phrase which you guys agreed with, which I happen to have written down, one of the few things I wrote. And it says ancillary uses for support or expansion. And I thought that was pretty general of the primary use, support or expansion.
That's good.
Is that friendly?
Yeah, so primary community assembly use and ancillary use for the support or expansion thereof, comma, on or above the ground floor.
Yes.
Great, will you second the motion?
I will.
Fantastic.
Is there any discussion on this?
Let's vote.
Will staff, you, you have it written down so we can go ahead and vote?
Does that, does that capture what you were thinking?
Uh, yes, do you tend, would you agree? I mean, let me just ask it explicitly. Would you agree that a social impact cafe on a congregational site or something similar, or a boys and girls club site would constitute a supportive ancillary use?
How, how about we put like, and, and related ancillary use?
Great, okay. I think there's a, should be a comma after thereof. Is that a comma?
Yes, there is a comma there.
Yeah, there is a comma, okay, good.
Is that okay?
Good with me, good for me, yeah.
Okay, so we'll vote. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
You forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Okay, 17, does anybody have any comments on 17? Other than staff had some. Yeah, does anybody have anything on 17 or should we go forward? Going once?
Sorry, sorry, yeah, I do have something on, on 17. Yeah, I, after, upon further consideration, I, as, yeah, as much, as much as we'd, we'd like to expand this program as much as possible, I wonder if we're straining ourselves too much with this language here. But you know what, I'm going to drop this issue.
Okay, anybody else have a comment on 17? Yes.
Well, I think that, I think we, it should stay there and maybe, you know, council, I mean, I was the one who pointed out that it wasn't just during the 50s and 60s. And, you know, council went ahead and made a program, which was a great idea, but didn't do a lot of the background. I don't know what they did, actually. I wasn't there, so I shouldn't say that. But there were certainly opportunities to add more information to their research. But I don't know that it's necessarily specifically related to this housing element at this point. So maybe we don't have to do this now and we should discuss it further with council in relation to that program instead of here.
So are you suggesting that we delete our change that we did on Monday night to this? So are you suggesting that we delete our change that we did on Monday night to this?
Uh, if we don't delete it, we need to add more explanation to it and not just have it be a redline. So I don't know if we, we can do that.
What explanation would that be?
That, uh, there were, uh, changes that impacted low income communities and people of color throughout the city throughout decades that resulted in the segregation that, uh, was manifested in the Pico neighborhood. I didn't write that down, so don't ask me to repeat it.
So, okay, so I, I'm torn because I think Commissioner Fresco has a good point. Um, the, the impact on indigenous communities, for example, was beyond the Pico neighborhood. Um, but I think, you know, today the governor signed a whole package of bills, um, aiming to, um, you know, repair the state's relationship with indigenous communities and make some progress, but you know, there's more, there's a long way to go. Um.
Do you have a chance to talk more about?
I do, I do. I, the change is, I would say, um, I would say throughout the city, right, so throughout the city and particularly in the Pico neighborhood and in the civic center area. Because there's some debate about how far west Pico goes and, you know, the, 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 the clearances to build Samo High and then the clearances 50 years later to build the civic disproportionately affected low income communities, um, and communities of color. Uh, I, I would, um, I would keep the indigenous communities, uh, for the sake of, for the sake of argument. But I would say throughout the city and particularly in the Pico neighborhood and the civic center Samo High area, that's appropriate phrasing, that disproportionately impacted low income communities, other impacted groups, indigenous communities and communities of color. That's the red line.
I would have to see that to know if I agreed with it.
Jing, do you have, did you catch that?
Yeah, just want, give me a moment. Um, I, I think I do.
And I would argue, and I would argue to staff respectfully that that does not counter council direction. It expands council direction, but I don't believe that it, um, I don't believe that it contradicts council direction.
Right. And yeah, I mean, so far I don't have a complete answer, but evidence shows that the Pico neighborhood really extended all the way down to Lincoln only after the freeway was built, so that's, but it did reach that far during that, after that, so anyway.
Right, but Pico doesn't, in, in your view, does the Pico neighborhood encompass the civic center area? Or do we need to call that out?
No, it does not, no.
Okay.
I can show, I can, well, I mean, I have documentation of the migration of people of color in Santa Monica based on, uh, eminent domain practices of the city.
Yeah, I, I just feel like we need to call Pico and civic center by name.
Right. And we're waiting for Jing to kind of read that back, your language back to us, which, which included.
Yep.
So this is through, throughout the city, uh, particularly the Pico neighborhood and the civic center area that disproportionately impacted low income communities, other impacted groups, indigenous communities and communities of color.
Can we take out other impacted groups?
Uh, hold on one second.
Super vague.
Other impact, okay.
Right, and move the comma that is after neighborhood to, um, to after area. There you go. Yep.
Hold on.
Is that okay? Sorry, I can't see any of you, so.
Nina's, Commissioner Fresco's reviewing.
Oh, okay.
I was just looking, this is for D, I'm trying to find the beginning of that sentence.
Oh.
The city shall continue to implement a right to return pilot program. Oh wait, the, now Jing's language disappeared, or Jing's redline.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to look that up for you, yeah.
I have it right here.
Oh, oh, you do, okay.
Yeah, I was just scrolling, well, yeah, it's good.
What if we said and expanded? Then we're making a recommendation for new direction. Continue and expand. So we're responsive to the fact that they set something up that had specific people in mind. And we're saying, hey, you know, other people had it in mind, you know, other people were affected too. That would solve the.
In the program background, that language was in the program background and in that area, it says it covers historic displacement for the civic auditorium because that was in the fifties and sixties.
Oh.
All right, come on, you too, let's get to a.
Yeah, this is just.
Get to the conclusion.
Let's leave it be and I, I say we delete it.
We don't drop, we don't need to do any of this.
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's take all of this out. Let's just go back to the original draft.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
There's a motion and a second, let's vote on it.
I shall move.
Okay, Commissioner?
Where I do.
Commissioner Fonte Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Chair Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
I'm an abstain since I was not here for the discussion.
So, Chair, that was seventeen and you'd be picking back up on eighteen.
Okay.
I'm changing.
Eighteen is six A, did anyone have anything? Okay, nineteen?
Yeah, um, I'm really, I'm going to just try again and also try to just to avoid conflict with staff. Could we just say assist pod beneficiaries in achieving a basic needs budget and leave it to the others to decide who the beneficiary should be? The housing element, we don't need to set pod policy in the housing element. We just need to, the purpose of the pod is to assist whoever it benefits in achieving a basic needs budget. So assist pod beneficiaries in achieving a basic.
I, I would make that motion.
Great, I'll second it.
Okay, let's vote.
Commissioner Fonte Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Okay, is there a twenty? Let's see, keep going. Oh no, okay, so now we are on to staff recommended changes. So, um, program, so now we're starting again, change one, program one K. Um, does anybody, Commissioner Landris, then, actually, let's start with Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, uh, I, I, uh, agree with, um, uh, you know, taking a closer look at, uh, Main Street and Montana, but I think we should also include Pico in the mix as well.
Can I ask why, why, why that is, Ellis? Because I guess I was concerned, why are we carving out Maine and, and Montana again? You know, we went through this with the loose where we weren't going to do affordable housing there because it was such a sensitive area. Like we're giving it special treatment again, and I'm just not quite sure why we're doing that.
Hi, can I respond to that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, Commissioner Raskin, please.
I, I think that, you know, we, we need to, uh, think very carefully about areas that are at, uh, special risk of, uh, displacement and gentrification, and I think that those areas are, I, I mean, if there's a way to phrase, you know, I think we, we will look closely at that when we go in and do the zoning code redlines. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I just think we should, we should, uh, include as many protections as possible. But if there's, you know, a different way to phrase it, you know, um, I'd be curious to hear, you know, what other options there are.
Um, I have, uh, Commissioner Lambert, I, Commissioner Landris was next actually, and then Commissioner Fresco.
Yeah, I, I would like to ask staff if there's a way to frame um, the issue that was raised by Ms. Larmour, uh, with respect to getting housing on projects that might not otherwise have housing but might not hit fifty percent. Um, I'm just wondering your thoughts on that because I, I do think it's great that we have groups like the Boys and Girls Club that want to try to add housing to their projects and we shouldn't. Um, I'm, I'm also, I'm actually also concerned, by the way, that this might oddly hurt some of the congregational efforts in case they're depending on their housing mix. So I think it's less, it may not be as much of an issue, but there are congregations in non-residential areas. I don't want them to get caught by this either.
Staff, do you have a response to that before we move on to Commissioner Fresco? Or do you want to think about it and then we'll, we can come back?
Yeah, uh, so unfortunately, I mean, yes, we, we do, um, so this language is taken directly from the statute. Um, we're certainly, you know, happy to, um, reach out to HCD staff again for clear, clearer, for, for more clarification. Uh, the fifty percent, um, language is from the statute and is in here because with existing standards, um, the city has a shortfall, um, of, of sites to accommodate lower income arena. Um, so we can certainly think through other ways to do it. I, I understand the, the concern, but we're going to have to take a look at, you know, obviously marrying the requirements of housing element law, um, and, and that issue.
Right, as long as HCD understands that if they insist on a strict black letter enforcement of this, that they could be actually hurting our, our ability to generate the housing that we want, right? Because as a result of being told that it has to be fifty percent, then, you know, a group like the Boys and Girls Club could turn around and say, sorry, we can't do it, so we're not going to do any. And then they don't have to because they're not, right, because they're not basically a, a housing project. That's not their core intent. Their core mission is, I wonder if there's a way to use language that focuses on the core mission of the entity and whether housing is somehow an ancillary use rather than a primary use. And we define housing as ancillary to, um, Boys and Girls Club use and therefore we don't apply the fifty percent rule because we're treating it as ancillary.
Uh, Commissioner Fresco?
Um, I don't know how many floors the Boys and Girls Club, for example, would need for their, uh, club use, but, um, if height is a concession that we can give an organization like that, couldn't they actually comply with this by adding an extra floor?
No, because the fifty percent, oh. Because the, well, but I think as I understand it, the fifty percent would be over the total floor area, right?
Right, but if they got a concession for another height, for enough height for another floor and they needed three floors for the YMCA and they could have, I don't, I mean, I'm just making up floors. If three floors were for.
That, that's a good question.
I mean, it might not be a problem. I mean, in general, I think that in our mixed use zones that we need to just have a new use that's called apartment building. And we need to define what an apartment building is and let people choose that. Instead of like saying, well, you can have housing on ground floor, but there's all this other stuff, let's just, you know, I think we would get a lot more housing that way, but that's just me.
Yeah, I know.
So just quickly, this is, this is something that perhaps we can, um, solve by, by maybe taking out the exception if, if you're not comfortable with that and then simply just addressing HCD's need, which is the, the, this zoning that is being described, the, uh, opportunity for one hundred percent and then the at least fifty percent of the floor area, um, for residential. That does not seem to be, um, flexible, but what could be flexible is the applicability. It's a numbers game. It has to do with our shortfall sites and how we account for that shortfall. So if we were to perhaps, you know, re- remove the, um, the reference to the exception and then add as the planning manager is doing.
The other question I had about this one, and I think maybe that would help clarify it for me as well, is, you know, what is mixed? And, and, um, you've put in there a mixed use housing project, but that I guess maybe that I, I got, I know this isn't it, but I, I might say something like, um, a mixed use project that includes housing.
I
Yeah.
I think a concern was what happens if, if it was some other use, I mean, can you build another use besides housing and commercial? Can you have commercial and retail or something that? And, you know, maybe an example would be, you know, there's a project up at the end of Pico where the freeway is and we certainly don't want housing. We wouldn't want housing there, but maybe we want some additional types of uses there. And there was a concern that this language would prevent that from happening.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm, that's exactly what I'm trying to solve for and I, that's why I'm thinking that if you only limit it to projects that are mixed use projects that include housing, that then if you had a mixed use project, right, that was say like industrial and office, that that would not be implicated in this.
So, so yeah, that, that is a point that we will want to reconfirm with HCD. Um, we believe that the term mixed use as used in the statute means mixed use, including housing. Um, and not kind of, you know, a commercial mixed use office retail or what have you. Um, and that's certainly what we thought they meant here. Um, so, you know, we certainly didn't intend to say that, uh, there a hundred, a, a commercial project in the city could, could never be, be done. That was not the intent.
But can I just ask, I, the def, it's project that I'm also getting hung up on because you have, I mean, there are DAs, I granted there are DAs, but you've got the Geary DA, you've got the Santa, you've got the Providence DA, both of which are mixed use, but housing is far from fifty percent. And then you have Bergamot, right, where there's a whole, who knows what's going to happen there, but wha- whatever amount of housing ends up on that project is likely to be less than fifty percent because it could be a third housing, a third hotel and a third arts, so.
That's a specific plan or an area plan, right?
No, I'm talking about the Bergam, like, I'm not talking about Bergamot area plan, I'm talking about Bergamot Station. I'm talking about that because that could come in as a project that has multiple components and, and consolidates or treats multiple parcels under one project definition. So.
So a couple of things about DAs quickly. The first is one thing that the city can do as a matter of policy is not apply um, this provision to a DA that's already in progress. City always has the opportunity to do that. In addition, DAs are, allow for deviations from code, that's how they work. Um, so, you know, that, that can be taken care of that way again and the, and the, we understand your questions. I think that's why we've, uh, the planning manager is suggesting those changes. Again, this is pulled from state law. It is required to, because of this shortfall we have with our, with our current zoning, um, require, with our current zoning. So this will allow us to explore it further and come back, um, when the zoning changes occur uh, with a more refined, um, you know, plan.
Uh, Leslie, I'm sorry, Leslie, can I just, one more thing and, um, I, I guess I'm a little confused, Heidi. It was always my understanding of the law that DAs have to be consistent with general plans, including the housing element and the zoning ordinance, and that you could not allow something in a DA that wasn't otherwise allowed by code or general plan.
You, you can deviate from your, you, you're correct about the plans. You can deviate from your zoning ordinance. As long as it's consistent with the plan. So if there's a, if there's a differential.
But this is in the general plan.
Right, so, so you could, you could, you're correct, and I forgot about that, but you could, you could absolutely exclude and you could exclude DAs from here specifically. Or you could also exclude, um, it just exclude pending DAs as an applicability issue when, when this implementation comes up.
Uh, okay, Leslie?
Um, I, I just, I want to point out that our direction for the past however many years has been to get away from DAs, so I wouldn't look at DAs as the future for making this work. I also, I mean, I, I think we're kind of swimming around not really completely understanding what we can do under state law. Until we know that, it's kind of a futile conversation.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm very uncomfortable with this policy. And if it is, or this program, and if it is a, if we're essentially parading state law, then I don't think we need to restate it. So I'm actually going to make a motion to remove this program.
So I, I actually, state law requires that if we have a shortfall to put a program into the housing element to, to acknowledge that we will be zoning to address the state, to address the shortfall.
Okay, then let's.
Can we say that? Just say that?
Let's say that, yeah.
Can I, can I, for an alternative suggestion? I, I would, can I, can I try something which, which would be to, and I don't know if it's a policy or a program, so work with me here. Is there a way to say something like, this program shall be implemented in a manner that maximizes opportunities for housing on sites that otherwise might not have provided housing? Like some generic, some general word that basically says, look, we're going to find a way to implement this such that the Boys and Girls Club doesn't walk away. So we, we signal that to HCD.
I think that's super vague language.
Yes.
That's good. Let's do that. I like this green line.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adopt this green line.
I move.
That can. Whatever. Mario, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, that's fine.
Uh, Ras, Commissioner Raskin?
Can I make a friendly amendment to keep in the except for Main Street in Montana and add also, also except for such zones that are adjacent to Pico Boulevard?
Wait, is that friendly to the maker and the seconder?
No.
So then no. Unless we vote.
I, I'm just thinking, yeah, it's not exactly friendly, but I'm thinking about now, I think we should just leave it more general and then have that specific discussion at the time that we are discussing the zoning code amendments.
I'll just take Montana, Montana and Main Street out.
And I just don't understand what's so special about Maine and Montana to leave them in there. I don't fight the Pico port portion, but let's have this discussion during the zoning.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion on the table, I believe, is as is written on the screen right now. So can we have a, a vote, please?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Apologies, yes.
Commissioner Pastor, uh, Chair Pastor, excuse me.
Yes. Chair Pastor? Yes. I foolishly thought we'd be done by six. I don't know what I was thinking. I think Monday and now, I forgot who I was dealing with. So I have to leave at six.
Okay.
I, I just have one final issue, if you would indulge me and let me talk about that before I go.
Yes, please.
Aside from the fire code, which I assume someone else is going to talk about. It's on page E10. And it relates to raising the density caps on R2, R3, and R4. And I would like to add language in there, they're trying to protect housing, which I totally support. Now, those density caps can be, cannot be raised, can be raised, theft on property, they're, um, wait a minute. The density caps will not apply to properties that are either rent-controlled, deed-restricted, or occupied by tenant in the past three years.
What, where is this?
On page E10, E10.
What's E, E10 of?
Appendix E.
Appendix E, okay.
Yes, and we've been talking about raising the density caps on R2, R3, and R4 forever. And I understand that you don't want to go crazy with that across the city because of jeopardizing tenants wherever they may be. So I would, we have language like this in other programs, and that would be the density caps cannot be raised on properties that are either rent-controlled, deed-restricted, or have been occupied by a tenant in the past three years.
Um, I support that. I just have one question because I think part of what we're trying to solve for is the Pico-Lanai parking lot, right? And I just want to make sure that since that parking lot is attached to the housing that is deed-restricted, that the parking lot itself is not deed-restricted.
Well, I think parking lots are actually the only thing they apply this to, so.
Yeah, so I was about to say that this is only applied to vacant parking lots. There is no existing housing on it. This is not a proposal to, to remove the density caps across all zones or across all the, yeah.
The opposite.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's just surface parking lots associated with existing commercial or residential uses, and then I believe at the last hearing, you also, the, the commission directed that it can't result in the displacement of any exist, of the existing residential use as well. So I think you've already covered that.
That was different, that was different, that was different. That was Jim's motion where you can't take down housing and consolidate it with a parking lot. Jim, isn't that right?
Can you show us this language? Because I can't find my E's.
It's, it's programmed, so it, it's actually not Appendix E10, that's just background discussion. It's Program 1C.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, because I was like, what am I looking for?
I was thinking on your-
It's described on page E10.
Give us a moment to get that on a slide for you, okay?
Okay, okay.
Do you want to do fire code while we're waiting for staff?
Yeah.
Well, that's-
Can I, yeah, I, I would just, I mean, and I'm not sure where this go, it's, it's in the section on the fire code, but I think we formally, I, I would move that we formally ask for further study of the 55-foot definition of high-rise and consult, and consultation with, you know, peer west sides, with west side cities that have similar seismic and fire safety concerns.
Second, that would be Culver City and Beverly Hills.
And Los Angeles.
Yeah, I see the fact. The vote?
Uh, yeah, let's vote.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Okay, we can go back to 1C, but it's a little different from what I was talking about. I mean, this is the one where Jim actually brought it up, put it in the last meeting, where if you have a parking lot, you can't bring in adjacent residential property to add to the site.
Well, it got lumped into seat 1C here.
Right, that's right.
And what, the thing that was interesting to me when Jing just described it was this was only for vacant parking lots. But the problem is this vacant parking lot could be lot tied to a lot that has housing, but then we wouldn't be able to, to implement this. And that's what, that's counter to what I was trying to get to.
My issue is a little different in that I, I, the density caps are very limiting. You have a lot of underdeveloped R2, R3 properties around the city, and I'd like to see the density caps raised or eliminated for those sites as long as they're not rent-controlled, deed-restricted, or occupied by a tenant.
Yeah, but.
Uh, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
I mean, I don't know, I'm just thinking, an example, I, I can think of a lot of R2 zone lots that have a duplex on it that are owner-occupied and rent, and so they're renting one and the owners of the other. And then that's-
I wouldn't get the density increase.
I'm thinking, wait, hold on, let Jim finish.
I'm sorry.
You're leaving, you're leaving, in that case, you're leaving, you know, two to four units off the table, and we have all these relocation requirements now. I, you know, I, but it's the same thing. Look, I argued last week, or Monday night, how we needed to protect the existing residential, I'm going to stick with that argument. I think your motion might limit the places.
Here's my thinking that, that basically if you have a single-family house occupied by an owner couple who live there forever, and they own the property, and they want to sell it for development, it shouldn't be limited to the density cap. And we have a number of single-family houses around the city on R2 lots that are underdeveloped.
Yeah. And you're, and so, so I'm sorry, Leslie, what is your motion at this point?
The motion would be to, the density cap will be lifted except for residential properties that are either rent-controlled, deed-restricted, or owner-occupa, I'm sorry, renter-occupied.
Is that a broader program? Is that a broader program than we've ever discussed?
Well, you, you talk about it in E10, and you say the, the density limits will be removed for surface parking lots. They've already gone there.
Right, but it sounds like you're talking about across every residential, like all residential neighborhoods? Is that right?
R2, as, as long as you're not displacing tenants.
Yes, we've, we've talked about removing the unit cap on R2, 3, and 4 a couple times.
Yeah, we have.
And I thought we had, I thought we had asked for a program, and I think what Leslie is asking for is a program to do that, but to protect existing rent-controlled and covenanted properties.
Exactly. Or single families occupied by renters. And the reason, I, I, I really believe that we have a number of single-family homes in R2 that are occupied by older who could sell their property and have it redeveloped for multiple family if they didn't have this density cap.
I would second that motion. If it protects rent control, renters, you know, I, I, I support that. I would second that. But so long, as there's also an exception, again, if it's a parking lot that's-
Right.
A parking lot can't be rent-controlled. That's all I'm saying.
I, I, I'm afraid this, this is a well-intentioned thing, but I think we need to study a little deeper as to where it's going to go and non-intense consequences, just because of the way it's hooked up. Because this alleged couple that's lived there forever, when they leave their home, when they sell it, it just becomes just like any other lot somewhere. In other words, why would it be treated any differently depending on who lived there for how long before that point? I, I don't quite see that.
I want to, I want to protect tenants, okay? And if a, if a single-family home is owned and sold for a three or four-unit rental or condo or whatever, there should not be a density cap on that site. Doesn't make any sense.
But, but how is that any different than any other site?
No.
So, so why are we saying that needs to be undensity capped? Is there something about it that had a density cap? Was there some-
Yes, there is a density cap on R2.
So maybe, maybe this will help a little bit. So there's currently a density cap on R2, R3, and R4.
Right.
And it was explained to me that part of the reason for that density cap was concern about displacement of renters and of people in covenant, you know, restricted units. And so I think what Leslie is trying to get at is to say, well, let's remove the unit caps to get more housing, but at the same time, let's really address the potential gentrification issue and make sure that units that are rent-controlled are not, don't have the density cap lifted.
Or do-
Can, so basically, what we would be doing is changing R2, R3, and R4 to form-based zoning, so it would be all about the envelope, and they could put as many units as they wanted in there.
No.
No, see, I don't understand what removing the density-
R2 allows one unit per 2,000 feet.
Right.
Then there's also a number of units, can't build more than a certain number of units, I can't remember what that number is. So it's, so, okay, if you, if you took that, if you had a 10,000 square foot lot that was R2, using the square footage, you could build five units.
Okay. I thought you were talking about the unit, one unit per 2,000 square feet.
No, no.
That you wanted to remove. Okay, up to four units is the part you want to remove.
Right.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Okay, good. Do you want to weigh in?
Um, let me just think about it for another minute.
But Jing is frozen, so I'm going to meet with Commissioner Raskin.
Well, let me just ask one more question, just to make sure. But you're not talking about this in 1C about surface parking lots. You want to put it everywhere. Is that right?
I'm going to put it everywhere in the R zones where there's not a renter or a rent-controlled unit or a deed-restricted property.
Okay.
So may I, may I just, just kind of jump in a little bit? I think a couple of things. Number one, it would be helpful to understand kind of what the need for this is or what the goal is here, given that we've demonstrated in the housing element that there is sufficient zone capacity without going into the residential neighborhoods to achieve the RENA. The goal here is to achieve the RENA and, and then some. Secondly, is, this is, this is longstanding policy in the city. It is absolutely an inside displacement measure. It is something that staff would want to look at, certainly in, in more detail, because we, we haven't looked at the potential implications of this. Those caps are in place because, because even though, you know, there's this proposal that it doesn't include existing rent-controlled or covenanted housing, there are tenants everywhere in, in the neighborhoods, we're 75% renter-city, you know, so we just have to be very careful about how we address the residential neighborhoods, given that, again, there is sufficient zone capacity in our commercial districts without potentially inadvertently impacting existing tenants, you know, for, for new, new housing production.
That's not what I-
I think-
Hold, hold on, Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to something like this in the future, but this needs to be studied. And there are going to be a significant environmental impacts associated with this that have not been disclosed, analyzed, or mitigated, and I think we need to do that first.
We can do this when we do the zoning ordinance. We can look at it.
It's a, it's a same rationale for increasing the AHPP threshold to six. We, we have a lot of smaller sites in the city that are underdeveloped that provide homeownership opportunities for people, and they're not being used.
So is there a compromise here, which could be that we get it in the housing element? I, I actually think that Commissioner Raskin has raised a really good point. And that it be an explore the possibility of eliminating the unit cap on R2, 3, and 4 with the exception of rent-controlled, whatever, whatever your exceptions were. Would that be a friendly amendment to you, Leslie?
There were three exceptions, and Jing didn't hear the third one. That is, if it's been occupied by a renter in the past three years, whether it's rent-controlled or not. And rent-controlled and deed-restricted, those are the three.
So, yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Would you, is that a friendly amendment to you?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to, I'm going to repeat it again, is to explore the possibility of lifting the unit cap on R2, R3, and R4 with the exception of rent-stabilized units, units that have a renter within the last three years. What was the last one?
Deed-restricted.
And deed-restricted housing. But can we have a vote on that?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Let me understand, this is to put it into the housing element?
Right, just to explore.
Floor.
And this would be a new policy, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Commissioner Fresco?
I can't vote for it because I don't think we know enough about it. I mean, it seems like a great sword. I, I'm just not sure. So I'm going to say no.
That's why we're exploring it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we need to explore it before we explore.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris? Commissioner Landris?
On the premise that it is true, well and truly exploring it and not committing to it, I will vote yes on that very clear understanding.
Commissioner Raskin?
Uh, yes, for the reasons that Commissioner Landris just said.
Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, I'm going to jump on that explorer train.
And Chair Pastor?
I am like Dora the Explorer here. That's a yes. Okay.
Yeah, but now you have to, you have to do it three times. You have to say yes three times if you're being Dora.
Oh, I do? Yes, yes, yes.
Did I vote? Did I vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Only one vote per Commissioner.
Unless you're Dora.
Well, what's his name? Snatcher will try to vote.
Okay. I have to, I'm really sorry. Have fun.
Hi, Commissioner Lambert. We're going to try to wrap it up here.
Okay.
Yeah, I had someplace to go to.
Um, let's look.
Chair, can I actually, can we actually go back to Program 1F? Because you remember, um, you wanted staff to come back with language.
Are we ready for that?
Yeah, we, we are. If, I can just share my screen. Sorry, it's a little bit messy, but, um, you can see the this green paragraph here. So this would be deleting the table and replaced with the city's assumptions of feasibility and the city's SSI inventory are based on the results of a feasibility analysis prepared by HRNA dated June 9, 2021. The city reserves the right to adjust these heights and FARs up or down. Any changes will ensure feasibility and that overall unit capacity assumed in the site inventory is met, including income category, and will be no lower than existing height and FAR. The off-site affordability requirement will be greater than the onsite requirement.
Ben, can I? Can we say height and FAR existing as of such and some date?
As of the adoption of the housing element?
Yes. Yes.
Just curious, can staff get behind this one?
I think we're okay with it.
Okay, so should we take a vote?
Yes, please.
Um, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yeah, I'm going to have to vote no, because it seems unbelievably vague and it just going to mean we have another whole cycle with HCD to go through. So, uh, you know, I, I just don't think it's getting us anywhere. It's so mushy. So I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
She's gone.
Oh, I'm sorry, she's gone. Yeah, Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Oh, I, yeah, I, I'm, I'm supportive of taking the numbers out. I am afraid that this is going to cause problems or we're going to end up putting them back in. But I'm going to support them.
Uh, and Chair Pastor?
I'm sorry, what was your vote, Jim?
It was a convoluted yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, I guess yes. I mean, I, I also am uncomfortable, but I'm going to vote yes.
Um, I would also note that you probably want to do the same thing in Program 1J as well, which is the downtown has the same table.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Jing. Okay, so, which, yeah.
You want to.
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
Um, so this is same, same language for Program 1J. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Uh, same, same reason, we're just hiding the peanut here. People are going to want to know what's in this program, what's in the housing element. And all they're going to get is these vague words. So I know what we're trying to do, but I might hear this the best way. So no.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor?
Yes.
May, Chair? I'd like to move, I'd just like to move that the table be somewhere in the housing element. I, I don't know where we put, I mean.
Sean, we, we have like discussed this ad nauseam. We have discussed this ad nauseam.
Is there a way to respond to Commissioner Fonda Bernardi's legitimate concern that people are going to want to know what the feasibility tables are and staff put it on the website? Just somewhere for people to look for it if they want to find it? For research purpose, like.
Isn't the HRNA?
It's in, it's in the feasibility analysis.
It is. Great.
It's in the public record.
Terrific.
Okay, let's go back to her staff proposed amendments. Does anybody have anything on two? On three? On four? And on five? Um, I want to go back to one thing. I'm not sure. I mean, I guess it's kind of 1F, but I, I, I'd like to just sort of make a general motion that I would like for our definition of a housing development project to be the same as the definition in the Housing Accountability Act.
So moved. Or seconded, depending on what your request is.
Oh, that's a motion.
Then I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Fresco, then Commissioner Raskin?
But do we not want to do that because, uh, our staff and attorneys have assured us that with the Housing Accountability Act projects, uh, if they want to have a major mud, uh, that they don't, or even a minor mud, they don't qualify for streamlining. So if we adopt their definition of a housing project, then we, we say a housing project does qualify for those who are saying they don't.
That's an interesting point. I think there's some debate, though, about whether or not.
Right, but basically, staff has given us a definition of housing project that allows us to make a decision that leaves, allows that debate to hang without having to settle it and to allow these projects to be streamlined. So maybe we should just let that be.
Uh, Commissioner Raskin, I think about that.
Yeah, I, I think that existing definitions of, of what constitutes a housing project under our code have been crafted to meet, uh, the specific needs of our local community, and I'm hesitant to uh, have a wholesale replacement with the, uh, definition under state code.
Um, I'm going to withdraw the motion. Okay, um, does anybody have anything they want to talk about for Appendix E? Okay, Appendix F? Okay, anything else in the housing element that we have not previously discussed? Commissioner Landris, and then Commissioner Raskin, and then Commissioner Fonda Bernardi? I'm emphasizing that previously discussed.
What is the definition? What is the definition? It has not been previously discussed. Um, there are references to neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood commercial is not defined. There are references to neighborhood commercial serving uses. Um, do we need to address that here, or can we address that in red line?
I think that's a zoning code issue.
That is, yeah, that's, that's a term already in the zoning code. It wasn't made up for the housing element. So that's, that's.
Right, but it's not super defined in it. I'm not talking about the neighborhood commercial zone. I'm talking about neighborhood commercial uses.
Right.
And we invented a term of art now for the, for the community assembly where we talked about community serving uses and we talked about community serving uses in the, um, with the, um, public land. So do we want to try to align?
We sure don't want to define them now.
Yeah, I mean.
No, right. Okay.
Commissioner Raskin? And I'm going to do the EIR next, and that was what you were going to bring up.
It, it is. I'll, I'll hold off till then.
Okay. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Uh, I, I would like to introduce the concept of an open space park on the Fifth and Arizona site, so that that would be tweaked, so we would get the same number of units, maybe going higher, uh, but not to be a totally maxed out housing project the way it's currently being represented. So how do we introduce that?
In the zoning.
Well, more in the suitable, right. What's that? It's in the suitable, the number of, the value of the housing on the suitable sites.
So I, I think like specific, specific decisions about the uses on city-owned property, this is probably not the appropriate, um, venue to be doing that through, because any, you know, obviously, the, the Fourth and Arizona site will go through a public process in the future for its use. And that would be the time that council will be making decisions, um, about that. So I'm not sure you, you need to be making those recommendations at this juncture.
Well, my concern is that these things tend to get built baked in, then they develop a momentum of their own, and then it's very hard to change them downstream. So I want to make sure that this is built in from the beginning.
Commissioner Landris?
Um, I understand what Commissioner Fonda Bernardi is trying to do. Um, I am concerned that the site itself is, if Leslie were still here, she would tell us that that site is over leveraged, in debt, and has to be feasible, and that we haven't even begun to solve for that. But more importantly, um, I, we have a letter from a member of the public who has been writing to us for many, many months, who would like to turn our airport into a brand new neighborhood.
Yeah, okay.
And so, wait, wait, I'm going to, I want to, I want to explain, I want to acknowledge that letter and also say that we can't, I'm, I don't want to talk about that. I don't want to deal with that here. But if we open up one, we have to open up all of them, and it's beyond the scope of the housing element. So I understand where you're trying to go, but I don't believe that it's within our, our goal is to produce a compliant housing element, and we've done that, and I don't think that we should start redesigning our open spaces. Um, since, as staff pointed out on the last item, we've already determined that through the housing element that exists, we can actually produce the housing that is called for under the element.
So Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, I guess if you have a, a motion you're thinking of that you want to float to see if you have a second? Um.
I do, but let me respond to what Mr. Lander said. You know, we set up very specific criteria for what was a suitable site. And those criteria covered a whole wide variety of things, whether there were historical objects, whether there was a fire station, there went on and on. This is just another criteria, because the, that particular zip code is the fastest growing zip code in our city, and it is underparked. And to follow up on the initiative of the airport, that airport, as far as I'm concerned, is way off in one corner of our city and not very beneficial to the area that is underparked, even with Reed Park, Palisades Park, and Tongva Park. There's such an impact of construction housing going on in that area, and will continue to go on in that area, that we need to lock in some open space. It's always good planning. Uh, and so I don't think we should be reluctant to say, this is an area that we've picked out, just like we picked out an area for a library or a fire station, and say, look, we need that as an open space.
Uh, do you want to make a motion?
My motion would be to ensure that that particular lot is 75% open space. Do whatever you want with the rest of it, but 75% open space.
Is there a second to that motion?
I was close to seconding it, but the 75 seems too high to me.
Give me a number.
At least, I mean, to me, it needs to be, this goes back to the feasibility issue. I'd love to see a park there. I want it feasible. So I think at least 33% is open space?
Oh, that's, uh, that's too low for me.
Okay.
Commissioner Landris?
Are we really sending staff back to rerun the calculations after we throw a number at them on Friday night before this has to be noticed on Monday?
No, we're not. We're not. And the reason we're not is that these numbers have a spring in them. There's a little bit of an absorption spring in there. There's an overcount built into it. We also do know that historically, the actual place where housing is placed, only one third of it goes in places that we're guessing over the next eight years are quote unquote suitable sites. The other two thirds is happening all over the city in places that allegedly were unsuitable. But I don't think we're so enslaved to this particular lot that we don't have the flexibility to manipulate things, to change things when it's desirable. And I think this is a very desirable outcome.
Okay, so, um, I'm not seeing that you have a second, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi? So unless you have another motion, I'm going to move on to the EIR.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, could we get a, a vote on the resolution that kind of incorporates all of your changes? Just so we don't lose track of it before you move on to the EIR?
Thank you, Heidi. Uh, yes, let's do that.
Before we vote, before we vote, can we ask staff if there are any items that we've, following are now around, staff is going to disagree with us? Have we resolved our, have we largely resolved our disagreements? I'm, no, I want to be explicit that if we haven't, we know what they are and that we have assurances that it's our recommendation that's going to go.
Well, yeah, I'm going to make that, I was going to make that motion at the end, um, but we can, let's do that now. Um, so I guess as a, so to, before we do that, let's answer, um, Commissioner Landris's question.
Um, you know, I apologize, I'm trying to do about 30 things at once here, so I, um, I'm not sure, you know, I can respond directly to that. I think the addenda, we provided our best staff response that we could um, in terms of what we, you know, are not recommending and areas where we agreed. Um, I would say refer to that, uh, you know, and, uh, I'm sorry, I can't really say, you know, what we have and haven't. I can't, I don't have, I haven't quite been tracking, picking that out.
Right, but I think we've de-conflicted probably 80 to 90%, if not 100% of where you indicated that there was a conflict. So.
Yeah, and, and, and again, you know, the, 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 the commission is, is absolutely free to make a, a recommendation. That is what you're supposed to do, you know, make that recommendation to council. Um, and ultimately, you know, we will have to probably work with the city manager's office in terms of how we present the information to council. Um, you know, and how, how to kind of reconcile, um, recommendations. But again, the commission can make whatever recommendation you'd like. Um, and, uh, you know, we've, we have a really clear record of all the changes tonight.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm still really worried about that. Again, I have never seen a jurisdiction where a recommendation essentially gets undermined by staff. And I feel like by presenting anything other than our red line that we are going to vote on tonight is really, I mean, undermining is a strong word. I, I think it's really difficult. I, I understand if staff wants to, in their staff report, say these things are inconsistent with what council recommended, and I understand that staff needs to do, staff, you know, has a responsibility to point that out, but I would like to make a motion that the, the red line recommendation from the, this body be the one that we vote on tonight, and that no, and that any disagreements with our recommendations be solely limited to the staff report. And I'm open to amending that motion, you know, if others have ideas, but that's I guess how I normally have seen it done.
If that's motion, I'll second it.
Uh, Commissioner Fresco?
Um, staff just said a really interesting thing, be, uh, which is that they will discuss it with the city manager, and maybe we should discuss it with the city manager too. And just kind of, I mean, we're sitting here yelling at staff and we've done it before. we're sitting here yelling at staff, and we've done it before, but maybe they're not the ones who make the decision, and we need to figure out how, who decides what goes to city council, and it may well be the city manager, and so maybe we can appoint somebody like our chair, for example, to reach out to that person.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, then Commissioner Reese, then Commissioner Landrus. You're on mute, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
I'm sorry, we've had a conversation about many different subjects where the same problem comes up. Is it in the text, or is it in the appendix? And you and I know the moment you separate it, the appendix vanishes, it gets lost. People don't make that effort to hook them up. And I think the city council is in that same situation. They're overwhelmed with reading, it pops up at the last minute, they can't look at all the charts, you know, they're like everybody else, they're trying to get through the information overload. But it does seem that in the format that it was presented to us, here's the text, then there's a little sidebar over here that said, staff does not agree with this. Why couldn't that be? Here's the text that we agreed with, and just below it, the staff has an objection to this. Then the city council, reading in the same lines, say, oh, okay, this is a red flag, is that something I should ask about? Who cares? Let's keep, in other words, they're really juxtaposed. It doesn't seem to be that hard. You can even italicize one. Our text is in the main thing, and the other one is italicized. You know, there's different ways, if you want to color-code it, who cares? But the idea was that it exists on the same piece of paper, and you just read through it at the same time, and it makes things easier, the city council.
Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. There's very easy ways to format this. And I think getting back to the question of, I'll bet you, if you look at the chart, you know, the charter that gave the planning commission rules, it says the planning commission recommends. It doesn't say that recommendation is filtered by staff.
Yes.
So I think that we don't have to look any farther than that, but I will say that it is consistent with my experience, is that they have filtered out our, our stuff, and we should hold, we should hold tough on that.
And I, so, first of all, I don't, yeah, first of all, I don't think it's the city manager's call. I think it's probably the city attorney's call in consultation with the city clerk, who is the parliamentarian, and the, the mayor, and the mayor pro tempore. I don't think, no disrespect to the city manager, I don't think it's the city manager's call. I also want to point out that the resolution before us states, now therefore, the planning commission of the city of Santa Monica does resolve as follows. Section 1, the planning commission, the planning commission has considered HCD's recommendations, and pursuant to Santa Monica Municipal Code, section 9.45.070A, the planning commission does hereby recommend to the city council that the city council adopt the sixth-cycle 2129 housing element as set forth in Exhibit A and as amended by Exhibit B attached here, too. By definition, what we recommend is what the council must consider under this resolution. If staff wants to pass its own resolution and send its, you know, a competing housing element up to city council, I suppose that's, staff's right, but I believe that we have the, we have the prerogative under this resolution and under the municipal code for our recommendations to be presented to council unamended.
Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, to, to that point, I think if there is emphasis for, just for the record here, that section 9.45.030 says that in preparing the general plan or any element of the general plan, the planning commission shall take such steps as they deem necessary. Full stop. And, you know, I think, you know, I, I've also not, not seen any other jurisdiction in, in my work, and I've practiced before, a lot of planning commissions and city councils where something that's adopted, or a general plan specifically, or an element that's adopted by the planning commission, is not then forwarded to the city council.
Heidi.
I think we're getting into semantics a little bit here, and I do just want to give a little bit of history on how this works. So first of all, just broadly, this is a city, this is a council-manager form of government, which means that the council directs the city manager, and the manager has all of the kind of administrative, you know, direct staff, right? So that's generally how that works, in terms of staff reports directly to the city manager, as directed by council. That's that. And then I think the other piece is, where, what you all are discussing is application of your recommendation, right? Because staff always makes a recommendation, and so does the planning commission. So what you all are discussing is how that gets presented, right? So council always reviews staff's recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation, right? So what, what you all are talking about is how it gets presented to the council.
Right, but because what we heard was that essentially our red line was not going to go to council. It was going to be amended. And I think that's what people are objecting to, that there be some kind of tempering of our recommendation in the red line itself.
I would, may I? This, parliamentarily speaking, Heidi, actually, I don't agree with, I mean, respectfully, yes, we're a council-manager form of government, but the planning commission, our authority derives directly from the city council, and we report directly to the city council. We are, we have staff, but just like our city attorney doesn't report to the city council, to the, our city attorney doesn't report to the city manager, but rather departs to the city, city attorney, we report to the city council, number one. And number two, in the generic motion, right, in the cheat sheet on the council table, somebody's going to say, I moved the staff report, right? That's what they say. And what that needs to mean is, I moved the planning commission recommendation. And then they say, and I'd like to amend it by accepting staff's comment here and staff's comment there. What we don't want to have happen is, I moved the staff report, meaning I want to move what staff recommends, and then, oh, yeah, I like this piece from the planning commission and that piece from the planning commission. We're trying to flip that script.
Exactly. I, I, again, that is, both, both methods are acceptable under the city's system, right? You are, you are, you are talking about your preference, but again, for years and years and years, I actually have not seen a situation, and the planning manager can attest to this more, where there hasn't been, if, if staff had some additional recommendations that don't, don't also get presented to the, to the city council.
Right.
But we'll not be able to present them.
Yeah, so let's let Commissioner Reese, and then I think we beat this horse.
Yeah, I was just going to say, at this point, I think the written evidence is, we get to make the recommendation. Commissioner Raskin read out of the municipal code, Dawn read out of the resolution. So it's semantics, nothing. It's in writing, this is our recommendation. We should move forward with our recommendation. If it doesn't get transmitted properly, then we have to figure out as a commission, you know, what are we really doing here? Because it seemed, it would, it would seem in that case, we're here to support staff's position and only staff's position, so somebody would have to change the charter. So let's, I think we have.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Wait, what are we voting now? On Elisa's motion?
Yeah, on my motion. Executive, I, Commissioner Raskin.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrus.
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
And Chair Pastor.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to the EIR, and hopefully this is the ultimate item. Commissioner Raskin.
Haven't done an official vote on a resolution.
We need to do the official resolution.
And then.
I'll move the resolution of recommendation, as amended clearly over the past few hours.
By the planning commission.
By the planning commission.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
I'm sorry, I'm talking into my muted phone, and I was just saying I was seconding, sorry.
I'm sorry, okay, good. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrus.
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
And Chair Pastor.
Yes. Okay, for reals now, let's go to the EIR. Commissioner Raskin.
I move the EIR.
Well, let's be quick, I just, I just have a few small wordsmithing things for the mitigation measures. Or mitigation measures, CR1A, it says, "To encourage the preservation, rehabilitation, restoration, and/or adaptive reuse of existing buildings, city shall consider adoption of an adaptive reuse ordinance," et cetera, et cetera. I'm a little bit worried that that's vague and deferred mitigation. Maybe we can change "considered adoption" to "shall adopt."
Sorry, what is that mitigating?
Yeah, tell us what page you're on again, please.
Sure, sorry, let me.
ES16, it talks about it on ES16, I think.
And what page is that in the PDF?
Uh, that would be, I think I have it as 20, but I didn't.
20, yeah, I do, too.
And, okay.
It is also on page 190 of the PDF.
And which, which is the mitigation now? I'm on page, yes.
CR1A.
Yeah, it's the first one for cultural resources.
Page 20, page 190, and page 659. Those are the three places it appears.
And what is our housing, does the housing element address the adoption? I mean, it must somewhere, but what do we say in the housing element about adoption of an adaptive reuse program? Do we say "shall"?
Yeah, there's, sorry, I'm just trying to find the program number, just give me a moment, we do have. One. Around 1H. So adaptive reuse of existing buildings for permanent residential use.
Right, can you bring that, do we have it? I, I mean, I'm fine with, with that language, with the change, I think.
Just, so maybe when, as the planning manager's pulling it up, I'm a little concerned about tying council's hands through an EIR that way, obligating them to pass an ordinance through an EIR, so perhaps we could make it more consistent with this program?
Well, I think that, I hate to speak for Commissioner Raskin, but I think he's just highlighting that that's a potential concern if we don't have a solid mitigation.
No, I understand, but I don't know that we can commit council to adopting an ordinance through an EIR. You know, it's a significant and unavoidable impact. We could maybe just look at whether or not we actually think that it's a proper mitigation measure from that perspective. I mean, obviously, the council would be certifying the EIR, but they're not necessarily committing, do you understand what I'm saying, like?
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand. I mean, I would be okay with the language in the program. Commissioner Raskin, what's, you're the motion maker here.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe we could just tweak a little bit to say, you know, city shall implement program 1H to accomplish this mitigation. I don't know, do they don't have any problems with that?
I guess I'm probably okay with that. Heidi, are you okay with that?
Sorry, it's been a long week, and I'm hitting on my mute on off. Yes, that's fine, because the council's already committing itself to 1H through the, through the housing element, so that's fine.
That's great, okay. Continue on, Commissioner Raskin.
Thanks, and I just got two more, hopefully, very minor things. For mitigation measure N, oh, sorry, PSB, and I can get you page number in a second. That's, that's the one that, I, I think it was Commissioner Landrus who wrote this about the Great Park. And when we discussed it at the time, I was a little bit concerned that the language needed to be tightened up a little bit to not be vague and deferred mitigation. But it says right now, the Great Park of Santa Monica Airport, this is, the city shall investigate the potential for establishing a Great Park at the Santa Monica Airport after its closure, yada, 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 through a public process that considers expansion of public space, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know, can we, can we tighten that up a little bit? I mean, I, I, I also don't want to, you know, go reach too far.
I'd kind of like to delete it, I think it's.
Wait, what page you're on again? I'm sorry.
It's 31.
Policy, I mean.
Is it a law, I mean, is it a law that we're going to have to do this right now with the voters?
Yeah.
Yeah, it already is. So that's why I put, that's why I added it in, is because it's already, it's in the charter, and it's in the, and it's in the.
So why do we need to repeat it in the EIR?
Because, because we want to commit, because it's a mitigation of the significant and unavoidable adverse physical effects on the environment, that we will continue to, I was hoping that we could have language, rather than investigate the potential. At this point, we've made the policy decision as the city that that's what we want. I was hoping that we would investigate, like, financing, right? So we would actually take design and financing steps now to facilitate the, to expedite the establishment of the Great Park. But I can live with this language. I would like to see the reference to the park in the, in the EIR.
Alice, just give me one second. I think that if it is in existing law, then it's a regulatory measure that already applies.
Right, but it's, we're, we're calling it out as a mitigation of a significant.
Again, if it's a regulatory measure, it already applies to the impact. But Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, I, I'm a little bit concerned about taking it out completely, because we'd be in a situation where we'd have usable mitigation measure that we're not putting into the EIR that was, was, you know, suggested to the city. You know, so I, I'd rather leave it in as, as is than take it out. But my preference would be to find a way to tighten up the language a little bit. Maybe we could just say, you know, the city, the city, you know, will, you know, follow its obligations, you know, pursuant to local law to report according to the will of the voters or something, I don't know.
Can I suggest language?
Yes, please.
The city shall continue to develop its plans to establish a Great Park. We're past investigation.
I like that.
I'm fine with that. Okay, and what's your third one?
It's actually more just a kind of question for staff. I noticed that in mitigation measure TCR1, that's for tribal and cultural resources, it says that the measure shall not apply to projects located in the city's former clay pit landfill areas. I don't think we're going to be building housing there, but I was curious why that was, that area is exempt from that.
Sorry, which mitigation measure are we on?
Sorry, this is TCR1, and I can give you a page number in just a second.
Oh, okay.
It's 36 of the, 36, 37 of the PDF.
Okay, and, and you were asking about, sorry, if you could repeat that, the.
Yeah, sorry, as I was reading through this for the meeting, I, I noticed that it, it says that that measure shall not apply to projects located within the city's former clay pit slash landfill areas. I'm just wondering, wondering why we're leaving that out.
Okay, I, I have both Nick and Erica Leishman from ER Consultants, maybe they can address that question?
It's probably, it's already been excavated.
That, that's exactly right, Commissioner. This is Nick from, from Wood. On page 3.13-9, this is in the tribal cultural resources section, there's, there's discussion that describes that these former clay pit landfill areas would be exempt from this mitigation since they're, since the underlying soils have been significantly disturbed from former clay mining and landfill activities. So to, to that point, it's, it's, it is because the, the underlying soils have been disturbed, so, so the need for this mitigation just, just isn't there. But perhaps, perhaps that language could be stricken from the mitigation measure, given that it's already in the discussion.
Yeah, I don't think we're, well, I don't know, I don't have a strong opinion on this. I'm fine, I'm fine as is.
Our clay went 40 to 70 feet deep, so they were pretty deep clays, clay pits.
So Commissioner Raskin, do you want to make a motion on the two changes that? So Commissioner Raskin, do you want to make a motion on the two changes that, um, we've discussed here?
Yeah, I, I'll move that we recommend, uh, certification of the EIR, uh, with the changes that we've.
Discuss, second. Oh, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Are we going to discuss it?
Excuse me?
Are we going to discuss it now, the EIR?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Okay, I thought we, I thought we had been discussing it, because if you have additional questions.
Because I had, I have about 20 items, that this is not a very good EIR in mind. There are many holes in it, there are many things that are unclear why they're stated that way. And I'll just start with an easy one. It says that our fire department, which is basically supposedly unable to meet current response times in today's environment, uh, is going to have no impact in the future, mysteriously. But somehow they are, uh, as significant but unavoidable. Whereas the police department somehow does not require additional facilities, does not require additional, uh, enablement. So there's a whole bunch of things like that that just don't make intuitive sense. It's not a question of, uh, changing a word or three. It's a question of looking at the whole document and saying, is it credible? And I'm having a hard time with it. And, and these are low hanging fruit. You know, there are issues about, uh, the whole water thing is, is, is completely, I'll say unrealistic, to say the least. So, um, how do we handle that as a group?
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd be curious to kind of, I mean, I, I, I don't want to belabor this meeting, but I'd be curious to drill down on what the specific concerns are. I mean, I, uh, you know, I'm, I'm harder on EIRs than most people are. But, you know, I, I think that the, that the EIR really does, um, have a really serious reckoning with the very, very significant environmental impacts that will occur as a result of the development of this housing. You know, if there's further mitigation that you, you, you think, uh, would, would address those issues, or if there are things that, that have not been disclosed, uh, you know, I, I, I would be curious to discuss that further.
Well, uh, so there's a whole section on air quality at the beginning, and it makes all these assumptions about the kind of equipment we use, the filters on that equipment. It makes assumption about the lack of paint on projects and things that really impact ARB and impact design. And there's a whole bunch of assumptions there. But, uh, they're all kind of like wishful thinking. Those things do not happen in real life. That starts with, uh, with air quality. It says that the schools are going to be in trouble, uh, and yet the school population is decreasing. So where's the trouble? This, but it says that the parks are in trouble, that there are significant unavoidable things, because presumably we don't have the money to maintain or enlarge our parks. So there's a whole bunch of assumptions like that, that I don't see where they're going. Some are positive, some are negative, uh, but, uh, they're just not accounted for. They're not discussed in a productive way. There's also a statement in here that says that there's no population increase because the population increase that supposedly was allocated for Santa Monica is part of a regional, a population increase. But that doesn't help us if the population actually shows up on our doorstep. But they're saying we don't have to mitigate for population because it's already covered in the region. But this EIR is for our loose, so there's a misapplication there. Then there's a whole thing about how vehicle miles traveled are somehow magically going to just decrease when people are zipping around in scooters. Well, they're not telling us what percentage of that 17% decrease in vehicle miles traveled is allocated to the big blue bus, which is on the ropes. What percent is allocated to hypothetically the micro mobility? What percent is allocated to new delivery devices? Anyway, it's, it's all kind of cooked up, and I know it's done very quickly, but it doesn't seem like they're talking about our city. And so I, I just look at this thing and I say, well, we, we have to be able to do better than this. This is not an EIR. This is the first draft of an EIR. This is like, uh, we're, what we hope to get. And I was hoping we would get something a little more solid. And, um, they also have things like, they say that our wells are desalinated. The Arcadia, Charnock, and Olympia wells are desalinated, are they? I never heard of that. They're being purified but not desalinated, unless they're talking about some form of saltwater intrusion into our groundwater basin. Okay? And anyway, it goes on and on like that. Um, so I'm just saying that this thing is.
Rachel will be the first to, uh, say that I give her and her teammates a hard time on a lot of secret documents in the city. I, I think that, that this particular document, um, does, does its job. I mean, the, the goal of, the purpose of an EIR is, is to disclose, uh, to the public what environmental impacts are associated with decisions, so that, uh, the public and decision makers can make meaningful choices. I think that we have enough information here to make meaningful choices. And I, I don't think that there are any impacts that, uh, really aren't, uh, disclosed. I mean, when you read this EIR, you, you, you really come to terms with, uh, how many resources have to go into building the housing that our city needs. And, uh, you know, it, it, it really, uh, for, at least for me, you know, it, 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 it shakes the earth. I mean, how, how much resources go into that? But, um, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable supporting this EIR.
Okay, well, like I say, uh, there's too many missing pieces here. There's wrong information. It says there's going to be no displacement, and we figured on there's going to be about 1,000 displacements. They talk about natural growth. Well, the natural growth in our city is not 98,000 units. It's, it's probably 1,200 units. They're talking about a whole bunch of stuff, but they're using the wrong numbers. And, uh, and I don't know if an EIR should talk about mitigations, but there should be ways of mitigating, but where we can mitigate, then you have to say so. And then that, I don't think, that's just something that ends up on the shelf. It doesn't change behavior, it doesn't change planning. And, uh, you know, I don't know, I don't know how you all see it, but we're, the big choke point is not whether this or that zoning will go up or down. The big choke point is going to be water. And by tomorrow afternoon, LA is going to be drilling into our groundwater basin. And that has not been calculated into the water that we're getting from MWD. Uh, they're supposedly going to maintain at 7,000 acre feet for the next 50 years. We know that's not going to happen. That's going to have to decrease. So in other words, there's a whole bunch of things like that that are not accounted for.
Yeah, so I'm going to call the question here. And Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, you know, if you don't think that there's substantial evidence to support the findings in the EIR, then my suggestion is that, you know, you vote accordingly and, um, it doesn't seem like, yes, that's all I'm going to say. So, call the question.
Um, I don't think there was a second on Commissioner Raskin's motion, actually.
Okay.
Was that Commissioner Reese? I believe it was, it was Commissioner Reese. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Monsieur Fresco?
Yes.
Monsieur Landris?
Yes.
Monsieur Raskin?
Yes.
Monsieur Reese? And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Okay. It is now 6:59. Um, and I think that we have done a behemoth job, and I want to thank again Commissioner Landris.
We need to vote on the EIR, so I'll move the certification of the EIR.
I thought that was supposed to.
No, we just voted on Ellis's changes.
No. No, he voted to certify certification of the EIR with his changes.
Okay, all right, I thought we, I thought we needed, I thought we did that.
I would, I would change my vote, because I understood it as Commissioner Landris said, hey, we're just voting on those modifications.
Yeah, I, that's what I thought I was going to.
Okay, so let's start again. Commissioner Raskin, can you separate your motion into two separate motions?
Uh, okay, motion number one, uh, the changes that I suggested.
Second.
Don't we have to vote to withdraw the first vote?
I don't know, Heidi?
Yes, somebody should vote to reconsider the previous vote.
I move to reconsider the previous vote.
Second.
Where?
Okay, let's have a vote on that.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Monsieur Fresco?
Yes.
Monsieur Landris?
Yes.
Monsieur Raskin?
Yes.
Monsieur Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Raskin?
All right, motion number one, uh, the changes that we discussed.
Okay.
Monsieur Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Monsieur Fresco?
Yes.
Monsieur Landris?
Yes.
Monsieur Raskin?
Yes.
Monsieur Reese? And Chair Pastor?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
All right, motion number two, uh, recommend certification of the EIR.
Okay.
Monsieur Fonda Bernardi?
No.
Monsieur Fresco?
Yes.
Monsieur Landris?
Yes.
Monsieur Raskin?
Yes.
Monsieur Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes.
Okay, and with that, again, staff, um, and you guys have done like a Herculean job. And I know we have, are sometimes really tough on you and, um, but I, at least me, I though appreciate everything you have done, and I just think it's really amazing, what you've done in the short amount of time, and you should be complimented for that. And I hope you all get to go on vacation after city council. Thank you to my commissioners who have worked really hard and also read a lot of paperwork. And I think that we are, we have, are recommending to the city council a compliant housing element. Thank you, Nina, for the visual. And thank you to the public for all of their input. It's really made, I think, a huge difference in our understanding of how housing gets built and what we need to do in the city. And so with that, it is 7:03, and I'm going to call the meeting ended. Thank you.
You're going to present this to the city council on the 12th, right?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great weekend.
You too.
Good night.